Calls me in order. Hello? Calls me in order. Um, I'd like, uh... Kelly?
Trustee Householder?
Here.
Trustee Lewis? Trustee Rocha?
Here.
Vice President Hernandez?
Here.
President Hack?
We have a quorum and we're gonna go into closed session for about fifteen minutes or so and the director will be back at seven o'clock to open the open session. We're back in closed session. There's nothing to report out, so we need to go into open session. So Kelly, would you reestablish the quorum, please?
Uh, yes, trustee householder?
Here.
Trustee Lewis?
Here.
Trustee Rocha?
Here.
Vice President Hernandez?
Here.
President Hack?
I'm here.
We have a quorum.
Mary, would you leave some flags loose?
Thank you. Standby. My flag's on the loose. Sorry, first time here.
On side.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is safe, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We're in three B, approval of minutes of the regular Board of Education meeting on November tenth.
I'll make...
Approval, chair?
Motion?
I'll second.
I'll second. All in favor of say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? It passes. Five zero. Uh, recognitions. Rec- recognition of Dr. Ronald McDowell.
Yes, we're gonna have Principal Louis Rocha from Antioch High School present a certificate of appreciation. He can make it up here.
It's been a while since I've been in here.
I know.
Good evening, President Gary Hack, Board of Trustees and our district leadership and to school community. Um, I'm here tonight to honor, um, Dr. Ronald McDowell, who, um, I had the opportunity to meet a year, a few years back. A gentleman by the name of Tim Manley was our site safety coordinator. And at a time when we were looking at trying to help educate our students on social justice, restore their practices, and looking at the diversity within our school community, Mr. Manley took it upon himself to call a favor from a good friend that he was, I believe, neighbors with in Pittsburgh where they both grew up. And so, um, as things would move forward, uh, Ronald McDowell came to the high school and he presented, created an artwork that captured, um, the leadership that's been local, regional, national, and global. So what he tried to do is capture, I think, um, you might even see Thomas Gaines as a representative at the, uh, in the mural. This mural's displayed in one of our art rooms. And in that art room, when we, um, were looking to have a social justice room where students could meet and resolve conflicts and work together to better understand each other's point of views, we converted our art room into a social justice room. And that is where the artwork is displayed at this time. So Ronald is a Pittsburgh resident. And although the city lines between the two cities used to be wider apart, I think we're much more in common and we share a great deal of history, the two communities and the two high schools. And so, um, I was touched to see a mural that was presented at Antioch High School to capture the essence of what we promote about diversity and acceptance across all ethnic, religious, and cultural boundaries. So, um, what I learned about Ronald McDowell, and I don't know if you guys know much about his history, but he, um, is a, is a child prodigy. He didn't have art classes growing up. He learned it on his own. And through the passion of art, I believe I read an article about him, that at eleven months old, his first year of life, he was already taking crayons and starting to display his thoughts, emotions, feelings from a young child's point of view, which as time went on, he learned to turn that into an art form. Some of you may know, or I don't know if you know this or not, but Michael Jackson, the icon musician that many of us may have listened to back in my day. Um, believe it or not, back in my day, that was when, you know, Billie Jean and all of those, well, Dr. McDowell was, um, a personal teacher to Michael Jackson in teaching art. So his, his, his work is across the country. If you go into Alabama, um, the article I read today had to do, was written in the Birmingham, I think, press. And with the Martin Luther King, um, monument was built there. And it was, um, presented and created by Ronald McDowell. So we're very fortunate to have someone who's homegrown, who is passionate about the arts, who has shared his art with many across the country. And today, my mother, Mary Rocha, met him and recently in Pittsburgh, and they got into a conversation. And my mom knew about the mural, 'cause actually my mom's on the mural. And, um, when he did the mural, uh, he tried to capture local leaders. So I don't know if, on that particular slide, you might see Tom Torleksen.
Wait on...
And who came from Cal, who obviously was from Antioch. He was a city councilman at one time, became state superintendent of schools. Number eighty-nine is Mickey, uh, not Mickey, I mean, Geo Marquetti, who's in the Hall of Fame from Antioch High School. Uh, you'll see, uh, obviously, at that time, I believe it was President Obama. And you'll see just the, the various leaders across the world and locally that address So what I wanted to do, um, in a time that I have, is I just wanted to, uh, read and present something and I'm gonna ask, while I look him up in a minute here. So the certificate, certificate of appreciation awarded to Dr. Ronald Scott McDowell in recognition of your donation of a wall mural at Antioch High School. And so on behalf of Antioch High School and the school community, I want to thank you for sharing your passion for art. Want to make sure, I, I know you're a pirate, but tonight you're a panther. So we wanna, uh, welcome you into the Antioch High School Panther family. Thank you for all that you've done and thank you for your friendship with Tim Manley and for being a friend of, uh, our high school family. So at this time, it's my pleasure and honor to introduce to you Ronald McDowell.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank, um, Antioch School Board, with the school board office, right? This is not City Hall. I just wanna thank everybody for honoring me tonight and giving me this certificate. And especially Mary, Mrs. Rocha, Mary Rocha, Rocha, and also Louis Rocha. Um, he didn't tell you, but I had just finished a huge mural for the city of Pittsburgh on the Creative Arts Building on the ceiling. And it was honoring all the people from, um, um, Ray Charles, um, everybody that performed in Pittsburgh. I put a hundred and thirty-three people on the ceiling in about three months. But, um, he's right. I left Pittsburgh, I'll Pablo, his mother used to come out there and bring us books and stuff to help the kids get educated. And I never thought that they would, um, honor me tonight because Tim Manley picked me up every morning when I finished the first mural by seven o'clock and it was probably thirty degrees. So I worked in that room and Louis was nice enough to bring a heater in there for me to paint. But after, um, Tim and I came up with the idea to do a multicultural mural to honor all the different cultures that have come and moved to Antioch. And yes, I was Michael Jackson's first art teacher and I did a lot of artwork on his Thriller album. But I also moved to Alabama because there was a need for people like the artwork that I'm able to do to help honor the civil rights people. I got a chance to meet and befriend Rosa Parks, Miranda Scott King, so many famous people that we only read about. Uh, my friend who passed away, um, Congressman John Lewis, recently was a good friend of mine. But sometimes you have to leave home to do something and then come back. I'm back here now for a little while, so if you guys need me, I'm doing a mural for a friend of mine that we're not talking about now on her wall, that's depicting her family and it's a, a picture about a Venice, some out of Venice and, and Spain and different places where their family visiting there. So, um, I'm here and I'm available just to leave work here because if you pick up history books now, everybody says I'm from Alabama because I have so much work there. And people like Oprah Winfrey and Spike Lee and all the big famous people use my work because I did the, um, the international statue called the Foot Soldier in the park where Bernie, where Martin Luther King and the kids were hosed and bombed. So, and Bernice, just so you, a lot of people don't know this, but Bernice Rincon, who went to work for Caesar Chavez, used to come over to my house. My sister worked under her at Title One in the late sixties, early seventies. And she had me do a lot of work for Caesar Chavez. I never met him, but I was honored to do the work. So what I learned growing up in Pittsburgh was that it was a multicultural place in Antioch. So when I went to Alabama, I was able to work and do things with everybody. Cause I'm a multicultural artist. I love doing people. Cause a hundred years from now, people will look back and know the story of Pittsburgh and Antioch and anything that we artists do. Because we have the first say so. The people have the first say so. We're just servants. But artists record everything for history and for history's prosperity and for the sake of knowledge and understanding all the different people and cultures all over the world. So I'm grateful to be here tonight and I gotta go, cause I've been working early this morning. I gotta get up tomorrow and finish this mural. So thank you, guys.
All right, we go to superintendent reports. Stephanie, you wanna follow that up?
Yeah, sure. That's a hard act to follow though, I'll tell ya. Now what I'm looking at my paper. Uh, well, first I wanna congratulate Orchard Park School. They recently competed in a Mesa competition, uh, with schools throughout the county. And Mesa stands for, if you don't know, math, engineering, science, and the arts, and they won top honors. And we've listed all of their winners on our social media pages and just really proud of them, so. Yay, Orchard Park. And then as you're most likely aware, the California Department of Public Health and the CDC uh, sent out new guidance for masks and we're working collaboratively with our employees to make sure that our schools are as safe as possible. And we'll be making an announcement no later than Friday. And finally, I wanna wish everyone, it's been a very challenging year to say the least. I wanna wish everyone, um, a wonderful spring break. It is well deserved. So, thank you.
On to school reports. Uh, we have two. Christine, you gonna lead us in?
It's Principal. I'm not sure if Principal Rocha is still here. Is he?
No, he had a previous engagement.
Okay. All right. So, um, they put together, uh, we've had the opportunity to view it. It is fabulous. And so without further ado, if you can queue it up, Mr. Gangler, showcasing a number of the great things they're proud of at their campus.
Good evening. This is Louis Rocha, Principal of Antioch High School. I'd like to start our program tonight by honoring Ronald McDowell, the artist who shared his talents with Antioch High School by creating this beautiful mural that's in one of our art rooms here at Antioch High School. And it's my honor to present him with an Antioch High School gift in honor of the service to Antioch High School and to East Contra Costa County. Thank you, Ronald McDowell. Welcome to Antioch High School, home of the Panthers. Tonight, we're going to be sharing information about Antioch High School, our various, uh, services that we offer to our student body and to our school community. I'm happy to share with you that the, uh, school bond measure B, the modernization project that was approved by the voters in the downtown region of our school community. Um, thanks to our residents, the bond measure in support of Antioch High School, we were able to modernize our entire school campus. And you'll see a couple of images of our new school entrance, our library, our stadium, and, um, our media technology, uh, center. All of our classrooms have been modernized. Surveillance cameras, security systems, and technology. So we're very excited and proud of the facility of Antioch High School from the school bot measure B project. And I'd just like to thank the residents, the community of Antioch High School for supporting Antioch High School being modernized from the nineteen fifty-five facility to a modernized twenty-one century high school of today. Tonight, I'm happy to share with you the small learning communities and our career pathway academies. As part of the redesign of Antioch High School, we converted our large comprehensive high school into four small schools. And the first two academies that you'll see here in this slide are the construction design academy that is part of our engineering portion of the Edge Academy. The second image you'll see to the right is our biotechnology, uh, program that connects students from Antioch High School into the career pathway of biotechnology. We're fortunate to have a partnership called Biotech Partners where our students do lab work and are connected to real-world application of the sciences, similar to how our engineers are learning how to frame, how to do architectural drawing, design, and construction. The next two small learning communities are our career pathways, one that focuses on leadership. And that's in the top portion that you see. We have a program that focuses on careers in teaching. And so the image of the, uh, students holding up the signs that you'll see are students that are learning how to be educators by going to our elementary schools and working with teachers in the classroom and then receiving training from one of our teachers, Rebecca Quinones, who helps train them and show them instructional strategies in support of students' learning, um, in elementary school. We also have the Media Technology Academy, which is the image you'll see down below. And that introduces our students to how to, um, create web design pages, how to work on social media broadcasting, game design, and a variety of other, um, types of programs that our students are fully engaged in. All of our four academies, all four of them, focus on connecting common core English, math, science, and history to career technical education, which we call linked learning. So we're preparing our students for college and career readiness. And I'm proud to share with you that these four programs are fully operational and all students are enrolled and engaged in these programs. I'm proud to share with you the, um, care team model that was introduced to Antioch High School in partnership with the Fred Finch, um, grant received by AUSD. We developed a flow chart that shows how students are referred at various levels of need and support. So we follow the tier one, two, and three, um, referral system. Teachers, staff can refer students to counselors and to the school administrators to establish SSTs and, uh, IEPs, which are parent and student conferences. And we can also then look into more, um, serious matters of therapy and mental health services. And so we have an array of services available at Antioch High School through our parent team model with the support of community service providers who work in partnership with Antioch High School to make sure that our students are getting the support that they need for social, emotional learning. I'm proud of the site-based mental health program that's been created along with a food pantry that our students manage in support to families in need, along with our mobile health clinic that provides health services to our students. So this is an example of the care team model that provides services to all students at whatever level of service is required.
For students who have experienced some adverse childhood experiences, including the recent effects of the pandemic, it can inhibit their ability to learn. During the school year, we have seen an increase in the number of students struggling with attendance, substance abuse, homelessness, food insecurities, and also depression and anxiety. We are planning to coordinate our social and emotional services next year by creating a restorative coordinator position who will work with our existing peers classes, our wellness room, and our care team. Our peers were trained this year with the Contra Costa County Office of Education through a grant funded by TUPE. Next year, in addition to conflict mediation and one-to-one meetings, they will provide peer-to-peer intervention for alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs. All of these interventions will be well documented in ARES.
Good evening. My name is Lenore Medina and I am the new vice principal at Antioch High School. Today, I will be sharing about our ELD program here at AHS. To begin, I'd like to introduce you to our most valued resource, our amazing team of ELD teachers. From left to right, we are fortunate to have Ms. Claire Partita, our bilingual aide, who works in several of our ELD support classes, as well as two sections of ELD classes. Next is me, Ms. Medina, who besides serving as VP, I also teach one section of ELD three, four to our largest population, our long-term English learners, also known as LTLS. We also have Ms. Isel Romo, a former English learner and Panther. Ms. Romo is a graduate of AHS who has returned to teach two double blocks of ELD one and two, and she is also our new Buente teacher. Mrs. Elida Roberts is the newest addition to our family who has recently been promoted from bilingual aide to classroom teacher, replacing Ms. Anne Swatcel. Ms. Ellie teaches two double blocks of ELD one and one section of ELD three, four to our LTLS. Not pictured is Ms. Alicia Flores, who teaches two sections of ELD three, four to our highest population of LTLS. This year, we are proud to announce that we had forty-two students who had scored an overall four on the LPAC, signaling eligibility for reclassification. However, some, some were not able to meet the additional criteria, either a C or better in English classes, or by passing the I Ready, which is a reading diagnostic tool, with a cutoff score that varies by grade level. Of the forty-two eligible students, so far only twenty-three have been reclassified with about ten more pending their I Ready results. As you may know, the Summit of LPAC window opened on February first statewide and goes until May thirty-first. At Antioch High, we have scheduled to test our almost four hundred students the week of April eleventh with the assistance of the district sweeps team. The listening, reading, and writing domains will be administered in groups and handled by our ELD teachers. They will be trained to administer and score. The speaking domain is administered to individual students and will be handled by myself, Ms. Partita, and support from the district sweeps team the week of April eleventh to fifteenth with make-up testing as needed. Additionally, the state requires that former English learners or reclassified students, also known as RFEBs, be monitored for a period of up to four years after their reclassification date. We currently have almost five hundred students at Antioch High School who fall under the RFEB classification. Of those four hundred and eighty students, close to two hundred are in their monitoring cycle and will be reviewed this school year. The district process is to have teachers review current grades and progress and to provide necessary supports and/or interventions as needed. Lastly, I am pleased to share that we have a newly developed ELAC parent page on our AHS website. Although it's still under construction, it is a place where parents can find helpful resources, a calendar, and links for upcoming ELAC meetings, presentation slides, minutes, agendas, and other resources from past meetings if they were unable to attend, our bylaws and information introducing our current ELAC officers, and other pertinent information. Per the policy established by the California EL roadmap, our goal is to have a wider reach into the community by aligning Principles Three and Four, system supporting effectiveness and alignment articulation across systems. If you have any questions or would like additional information about our ELD program at AHS, I'm, please reach out. I'm happy to help. Thank you and have a good evening.
Hi, my name is Stefan Cartwright, one of the vice principals at Antioch High School. I'm gonna tell you about our college-going programs and our expanded learning program. Antioch High School has partnered with UCSF Trio Program under the direction of Deputy Director Lenisha Lee. UCSF Upward Bound Program's goal is to increase the rate at which our scholars enroll and complete secondary and post-secondary education through culturally enriched opportunities, academic instruction, mentoring, and access to opportunities and experiences that expand their views of opportunities afforded to them. Some of the upward bound activities consist of monthly parent nights, weekly scholar check-ins, college preparation workshops, and field trips. We also partner with Destination College Advising Corps, which provides Antioch High School two college counselors to provide college application assistance, financial aid assistance, and educational planning for our scholars and their families. They facilitate FAFSA workshops, CSU UC application workshops, and meet with students regularly to assist them in their academic planning. We also have a robust after-school program that runs Monday through Friday from three PM to six PM under the guidance of our after-school program coordinator, Derek Maza. Our after-school program offers tutoring, credit recovery, student-driven clubs and programs, as well as enrichment opportunities. Our after-school program supports our school with field trip opportunities, school-wide celebrations such as honor roll and lunchtime events.
Evening. My name is Joe Hernandez and I will be sharing about the AHS technology. The past year and a half has been a very interesting time for technology. We've moved from a school that shared multiple cows and computer labs, roughly two hundred and fifty computers throughout our fourteen computer stations on campus, to a site that now supports fifty-four computer class sets or roughly access to about eighteen hundred computers. We recently held a tech day to support students and their parents. It was a three, it was three days of technology in the classrooms, along with an evening session parent workshop. We had great success and we plan on having tech days each semester moving forward, especially in August when students return for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Antioch High School has also led the district in the live streaming. Antioch High School has also led the district in live streaming many of our activities: graduation, VAPA concerts, program ceremonies, student achievement awards, and athletics, just to name a few. We have been able to do this with support from the Antioch High School Media Tech Academy and our own AUSD IT department. So, special thanks to Joe, Jason, and Antioch High School's tech, Jose Martinez, for helping us with training and all the other resources needed for technology at Antioch High School.
We thank you for your time, attention, and support of Antioch High School. Have a wonderful evening.
Very well done.
Very well done. So, Mary, say to Louis, "Good job."
Good job.
He bailed out, but that's okay.
President Hack? I was wondering if Superintendent Anello, if you could send us in an email the AHS Coordinated Care Team, maybe that slide that has the kind of circles and the kind of flow chart, because it's really hard to read.
Absolutely. Be happy to.
Thank you, and good job.
Okay. Let's go to a 6B Rocketship Delta Prep Annual Performance Review. Christine?
We'd like to welcome Rocketship Delta Prep staff, and it looks like we have some special guests as well. They're here to share their annual performance review.
Do you want to do the speakers first or the report first? We have five speaker cards. Want to do the speakers first? Okay. First speaker I have is Reese Reddick. Get the microphone down a little bit.
I have this weird... Good evening, President Hack and Board of Trustees. My name is Reese Reddick. I am in second grade, and my little sibling is in TK.
All right.
This is my first year at Rocketship Delta Prep, and I love it. One of my favorite things to do is guided reading. My favorite part is reading out loud to my teacher during guided reading. Why I love it so much is because I always get the answers correct, and my teachers tell me that I am advancing so fast that I should be in third grade already. I really enjoy our movement breaks because we get to dance around, which then helps us to focus more on our academic... academic work. I am so excited to tell you that I have completed all of my goals for my OLPs on Lexia and Freckle Fluency for this week, and it's only Wednesday. Fun fact, fun fact, my uniform is my favorite colors, khaki and green. Thank you so much.
Okay, we have a second speaker, Deja Gibson. Did I say that right? I don't know. She's coming? Okay, kind of.
I think it's getting cooler. They're better. I still took my jacket off. Jack, I was warm.
Hello. Hi. Sorry about that, we were outside. Good evening, President Hack and Board of Trustees. My name is Deja Gibson. My family and I are one of the founding families of Rocketship Delta Prep. I have three kids. I have a fourth grader, a third grader, and I have a second grader. As you know, I live here in Antioch. Sorry, guys. And it is amazing that I did not have to look too far for my children to receive high-quality education. Most of all, Rocketship has become like family, and my kids love being a rocketeer. I love showing my kids my leadership skills, and I am to put them to practice through being on a school site council as well as the parent organization committee. In the parent organization committee, I am able to advocate for education equality for students in my community. This will leave a lasting impression on my children and showing them how involved in the community we need to be. It is great how Rocketship and I are able to fully be involved in my parent leadership, and I love being able to work firsthand with the school leadership team as well as all of my children's teachers. From day one, my parent partnership has always been fully encouraged and welcomed. All staff are welcoming and open to my ideas. Rocketship is not only hands-on with our children's academic needs, but also helligerly. For example, through their Care Coordinator Program, Rocketship is able to provide parents with resources, whether it is helping to find childcare, helping with finding resources, or helping with rent assistance, and helping families in any kind of financial need that they might have. I also have a rocketeer that has an IEP, so you could imagine how scared I was when we had to go on distance learning. But with Rocketship's help, my child did not miss out on any other academic needs. Since day one, my child's team has always communicated with me and keep me updated on his academic progress. For that, I am forever and truly grateful. It is always heartwarming to hear about his success. We are so blessed to have such an amazing school in our own zip code. Thanks for your time.
I have a third speaker, Samaya. Correct?
Good evening, school board members. Thank you all for allowing us to be here tonight. My name's Samaya. I'm a third-grade rocketeer. The last time I spoke at a board meeting, I was using, I was a kindergartner rocketeer. I use words like proagantis and antagonist. However, I am grateful that you all have the courage to listen to our families, schools leaders, school leaders, community, and supported with keeping our school open. By the way, courage is one of our core values. I love that our teachers work hard each and every day to help us grow our brains to ensure that we get into the best colleges. Often, as a community, we get rewarded with pizza parties, popsicle parties, and more as we strive to achieve our goals. Our school leaders strive to keep us safe, protecting us, and growing our brains. All of our having fun. Lastly, last but not least, my teacher, Ms. Knox, taught me that if I hold my finger or a pencil or any other object under the word I am reading, it helps me read with efficiency and quickly. My teacher, Ms. Yerius, taught me that if I am writing a story, to put quotation marks around the person's direct words, meaning dialogue. Thank you all for allowing me to speak tonight. See you at the next board meeting I speak at.
Our next speaker is Rosa Magaña.
Hi, good evening, President Hack and Board of Trustees. My name is Rosa Magaña, and I am a proud founding parent at Rocketship Delta Prep here in Antioch. My son Mario is right here. He's a fourth grader, and he absolutely loves going to Rocketship. So, I have been an Antioch resident since 2015. So, when I heard, I had already heard a lot of great things about Rocketship from the one in San, what do you call it, Concord and San Jose. So, when I heard that Rocketship was going to open up here in Antioch, I just jumped on the opportunity, and I had to enroll my son. So, I just love knowing that my son can go to a brand-new, state-of-the-art, like net-zero facility, and of course, that it was only like a mile away from my house. So, I love that. So, one of Rocketship's pillars is, you know, parent partnership. So, not only am I able to partner up with my son's teachers, but I'm also able to take, to be a part of the parent organizing committee. So, in the committee, you know, we, as parents, like learn skills on how to develop a relationship between our school and our community. An example of how we build a relationship between our school and community is that our parent organizing committee has a monthly cleanup event. I don't know if you guys have been there, but next month or whenever we do it next, you guys, I welcome everybody to it. It's really cool. It's an event that basically anyone can join, staff, of course, students, parents, can get together, and we can clean our community, you know, help clean our, keep our community clean, which is very much needed at this time. It's fun, and it's a rewarding event for everyone involved. Everyone gets to do, you know, some arts and crafts. We try to make it fun for the kids, so I encourage that. And as a parent leader at Rocketship, I'm also able to advocate along parents to assure that our students have an education, the education equity that they deserve. So, I've seen a lot of growth in Mario since, you know, he joined Rocketship Delta Prep in 2018. At school, Mario rotates between four content blocks every day, so Humanities, STEM, Learning Lab, and Enrichment. And he uses independent learning, small group tutoring, and adaptive online learning programs to help him achieve his learning potential each day at school. So, even when like Mario had the distance learning, you know, he was still able to get a lot of attention from his teachers. They kept me informed on his progress and, you know, made sure that he understood the content before dismissing him home, you know, dismissing him from class. And although he was, loved the distance learning, he was super excited to go back to in-person, obviously, in-person learning, so gets to see all his teachers and friends. So, we're just very happy that he and all of our rocketeers are able to receive such high-quality education and that we didn't have to look far for it at all to receive it. So, I appreciate it. Thank you guys for your time.
We had one last speaker, Roslyn Ruig. I hope I got that right.
Hi, good evening, President Hack and Board of Trustees. My name is Roslyn Ruig. This is our first year at Rocketship Delta Prep. I have a kindergartner, and his name is Bobby. Bobby was diagnosed with high-functioning autism at the age of four, so we knew that we needed a school that would challenge him and encourage him, one where he wouldn't get lost. We started looking into all of our local schools and homeschooling when we stumbled upon Rocketship. We really fell in love with the story of Rocketship, their mission, and their vision. We applied, and we were initially waitlisted. But a few weeks later, we received a call from Ms. Rico, and she let us know that we had a spot opened up and that we had twenty-four hours to consider taking it. We didn't even hesitate. We jumped immediately at it, and it is the best decision we've ever made. From day one, the welcoming Bobby has received has made him so confident and so happy to leave us behind for the day. He literally runs away from us to the gates to hug and say hello to Ms. Hillard and Ms. Mayorga. We are amazed, by the way, that Mr. Brown calls every student by name at the walkergate and knows exactly who everyone's parents are. And he also takes the time to talk to us about how Bobby's been, school, or the baseball team, the Yankees. We have watched Bobby blossom both socially and academically these past seven months. He can now read twenty-five-page books like they're nothing. He does subtraction and addition. He can explain to me why a sentence should end in a period, comma, question mark, or exclamation point. And last week, he let me know that the word "there" with an "I" means people, and "without" means places. We are so impressed with the curriculum, and this is only kindergarten. If the academic accomplishments are not enough, we can talk about the connection that we have made with Bobby's teachers. The relationships we've made are so open and honest. I can text or call them at any time and about anything. Rocketship is more to us than a school, and Bobby is so much more to them than a number. The best example I can give is that last week, Bobby had a very challenging week. He was extremely sensitive and emotional. He was getting angry and crying in class. He left or tried to leave class without permission. And you know what I received? I received an encouraging phone call from Ms. A, letting me know what happened with Bobby, but that she also had a heart-to-heart with him. They talked about his behavior and how he wasn't being responsible or respectful of himself, her, or the other students. She reminded him that he was one of her leaders and that he needed to show others the right way, but she also reminded him that sometimes we make mistakes, and he's still her guy. Ms. Alcazar knows how much Bobby loves dinosaurs, and she created a centers for him so that when he's done with his work early, he can remain calm and engaged in class. I also received a phone call from Mrs. Steele, the kindergarten vice principal, to make sure, sorry, oh, can I finish? Oh, it's up to you.
Okay, you almost finished?
Yeah. I also received a phone call from Ms. Steele, the vice principal, to make sure that I knew how Bobby was behaving, but also to know if something personal at home was affecting him and if there was anything we were struggling with and if we needed assistance. It is truly an amazing community, and that's why I have become part of the parent organization committee. We love Rocketship, and we cannot wait to see where Bobby goes in the next five years. Thank you.
Those are our last public speakers, so Christine, do you have some? The presentation?
Good evening, good evening, President Hack and trustees. My name is Juan Mateos. I'm a director of schools with Rocketship Public Schools, where I have the honor of serving the families, students that you saw today, and supporting Rocketship Delta Prep. Thank you for this opportunity today to present to you all this evening, and a special note of thank you to Superintendent Anello and our liaison from the district, Andy Cannon, for all of your partnership. Next slide, please. And before we get into what makes Rocketship Delta Prep special, I would like to give a brief overview of our Rocketship approach, if we can go to the next slide, please. At Rocketship, we believe that transformational schools are built on three pillars. One, personalized learning that tailors instruction, content, and pace to the unique needs of each student. Two, developing talent in all team members to unleash the potential in our classrooms and our communities. And three, we believe in the power of parents who are deeply invested in their child's success and contribute to the vibrant school community that we get to serve. Next slide, please. Rocketship Delta Prep serves students in grades TK through 5th grade on Cavallo Road in Antioch, and a majority of the students that we have the privilege of serving are classified as socially, economically disadvantaged. Nearly one-third are classified as English learners, and nine percent of our students have special needs. Delta Prep is an incredibly diverse school with large populations of Hispanic or Latino students, Black or African-American students, and students of many other races. This school year, like the last few years have been unprecedented, challenging, and has really tested us in a lot of ways, and I'm immeasurably proud of the work of the Rocketship Delta Prep team and the courage with which they have faced the challenges that have come their way. So, I am thrilled today to introduce to you the leader of that team, Principal Lauren Hilliard.
Thank you so much, Juan. Good evening, President Hack and trustees. My name is Lauren Hilliard, and I am the proud principal at Rocketship Delta Prep. Next slide, please. Delta Prep is a special school that works every single day to unleash the potential of every single student that we serve. At the core of this vision is our commitment to serve all students, no matter their needs or background, with excellence in order to eliminate the equity and opportunity gaps so many of our rocketeers face. Next slide, please. Before the COVID-19 pandemic hit, our students were on track to grow more than one year in each student subgroup. Now that we are back in person this school year, we are working harder than ever to accelerate student growth to get back on track academically. In reading, we are making tremendous progress. STEP, or the Strategic Teaching and Evaluation of Progress from the University of Chicago, is an internal assessment that we use to measure student growth. Different steps... Different step levels corresponding to different reading difficulty levels. We are proud that nearly three-quarters of our students have grown at least one step level this school year, setting them up for reading success in the future. And our youngest students are particularly accomplished in reading, setting the foundation for learning for the rest of their lives. Next slide, please. Our special education Rocketeers are growing fast, as measured by our winter NWA assessment. We are proud of the work that they are doing and we are encouraged by these results. But we are also not gonna rest until all students are achieving at their full potential. We've worked incredibly hard over the last few years to increase academic achievement for all students, no matter their background or ability, and we cannot wait to see what our students do in the future. Next slide, please. At the core of this work is personalized learning for each student to meet their needs academically, socially, emotionally, and holistically. Through individual instruction, small group learning, whole-class lessons, online learning programs, and more, we meet students exactly where they are and provide them with the tools that they need to succeed. Part of these tools is showing our students that they and their communities matter. One way we do this is through our Los Dichos program. Each month, our parent volunteers read a book aloud to students that is centered around the Dichos, or lesson. This lesson is in multiple language, giving volunteers an opportunity to demonstrate their culture, heritage, and language because they are all valued in our classroom and our school. We've been doing Los Dichos virtually during COVID, but recently, we've had, we brought parents back on campus for masked outdoor reading and it was truly incredible. We're also having our Los Dichos tomorrow and Friday as well, for the second one. Our community-centered approach really makes Rocketship Delta Prep a vibrant community dedicated to serving all students' individual needs. Next slide, please. As many of you have said tonight, this year has been extremely challenging for all of us. But I am incredibly proud of our staff and students at Delta. We've implemented comprehensive COVID safety protocols to keep our students and staff safe. As public health guidelines evolve, so are we. Above all, we want to make sure that we are keeping kids and staff in school where we can best partner with each other and our families to unleash the potential of every student. Next slide, please. No matter if we are online or in-person, Rocketship Delta Prep is a strong community of students, parents, educators, and the city of Antioch. Our doors are always open for this board to visit, elected officials to stop in, and for our families to come in and join in on classroom fun. And also for our neighbors to borrow some books from our lending library outside. And while we've come a long way in the past few years, there is so much for us to learn. From you and our community to serve our students and families the best. Imagine what more is possible in the next few years for our students, our babies, our children, our nieces and nephews in Antioch as we continue to partner with our community. Thank you for your time and attention and it was a pleasure speaking to you all this evening.
Thank you for sharing with us. Uh, if you, um, want to leave, we'll give you a few minutes or whatever, or you wanna stay, that's fine too.
President Hack?
You can stay?
Yeah.
Cool, alright.
President Hack?
Go ahead.
I just have some comments I wanna make. I just wanna say thank you, um, for this presentation. Also, thank you for extending invitations to all of us board members multiple times. I've had a chance to go to your school in that capacity. Um, and I really also appreciate, um, the full annual performance review, the full PDF. Um, I find that it's written in a way that's accessible to, um, a lot of people. And so, you know, it's very transparent and I just like the way that it's set up. So, I appreciate everybody coming out tonight. Uh, shout out to all the kids too who spoke. You guys did fantastically. Shout out. That's it, that's it.
Uh, you know, I think that, oh, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, so, thank you for coming out. Uh, you know, I'm always impressed when I see young people stepping up to the plate to celebrate what they're experiencing. You know, I think that we can talk all day about, you know, what we wanna accomplish and how we wanna accomplish it, but people that are going through it presently, um, and seeing sort of the growth in those young people and sort of the future of, sort of shining through those young people is always a great thing. So, thank you for, to the, to the kiddos for coming and, and presenting. Uh, and thank you to the parents for, for showing up as well. So, thank you.
Any other comments?
Um, I would like to comment to say thank you very much for coming and we've, we've, know we've had some hard times, but I think we're on the right path. I really like the idea of Los Dichos. That sounds very interesting to me. Uh, it's a good way of including in, uh, having your parents involved and a good idea. Thank you for bringing the children.
Yeah, thank you so much for coming. I appreciate the presentation you gave. It was really great. Uh, you know, I love hearing from you guys, but respectfully, I love hearing from the kids a whole lot more 'cause they're, they're the ones who are getting the experience. And I just wanna, you know, highlight you giving students the experience to be able to speak out. Uh, I myself remember, um, having some of my first public speaking experiences be given to me at a very young age. And I think about those very often when I reflect on where I am now. So, it may be that these students are, you know, going to go off and do amazing, amazing things and I can't wait to see them surpass the things I've done.
Ditto. What more can you say? And ki- and kids are just wonderful, you know, when they talk. That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Alright, let's go forward to public comments. Uh, 7A, I have one person, Velma Wilson, to speak. Velma, if you wanna wait a couple of seconds?
Yes, absolutely. You remember Shamari from back, uh, she was at lunch, she spoke at that lunch and she was.
Okay, Velma, would you please share?
Good evening, School Board trustee. What a way to be back at 510 G Street.
I know.
Welcome, everybody, to AUSD.
I know.
Tonight, I just wanna start and say, I think the message of this school year, um, is unity. And we are Antioch Unified. We are one Antioch Unified. Collectively, we are unity. And so, give a shout out to AEA for always supporting their educators and making sure that they're getting what they need and deserve. Because without you all, guess what? We wouldn't have scholars at Antioch High, scholars at Deer Valley, and students at all of the schools without the, in this district. So, I pray that we can come to the meeting of the minds and really definitely make sure we keep our classrooms, we get our libraries back open, because with our state superintendent doing things right now to support early childhood literacy, making sure that our kids are learning how to read before the 3rd grade, it's important. And as a mom of a student that is now 19 and he's actually doing a nine-week program with Pixar Studios, yes. Look for Jesse in the future, y'all. But I want y'all to know that it was because of my efforts and because of these educators and the library staff that really helped catapult his reading and learning loss. So, now to that, I wanna say thank you really to everyone that came out and supported Antioch Unified's first collective district-wide Black History Program. It was amazing. If you haven't seen it, please go onto YouTube and look it up and get a chance to see our students throughout this entire district that actually did and came together to do what? Celebrate Black History. Next year, it'll be bigger and better. But I wanna, I just really wanna say, just thank you to our superintendent and to her staff, to Lindsay, to Jessica, to Christine, to Kel-, to everybody that really, really got behind. It was short notice, but guess what? We did it. Because why? We are AUSD. And the message again is unity. I wear tonight on my, on my shirt a pin that is reflecting a new club in Antioch that I personally chartered, United Antioch Kiwanis. And the message of Kiwanis is changing and really infecting the children of the world, one child at a time. And as we are now suffering the pains and ills and we hear, we have children that are of Ukraine descent, we need to really rally around those children right now more than ever. So, just really, I want everyone to reflect. Did you see this pin on my shirt with this ribbon? If you would like one, reach out to me and I will get you one. Proceeds will go to the UNICEF Foundation to help support the children of Ukraine. And I would like, if we could, take a moment of silence for those children that just got killed at the hands of a murderer.
Thank you for that thought. Uh, we have a second speaker in this area. Julia, uh, won't even try to pronounce.
Amogokwe.
So, you can help me.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Julia Amogokwe. I'm the parent of two children attending the school district. And also, good evening to the community present here. I'd like to request the school board three things. One is regarding the CDC mandates. The hospitalizations and COVID testings are drastically low nationwide. The weather is getting hot. For these reasons, I'd like the mask and vaccine mandates to be removed from schools as soon as is possible. And for the school district not to force the masks and the vaccines on, upon our children's. Second thing is that I'd like to request from the school districts is for the school district to give 60% of the school funding to parents who are homeschooling or doing alternative virtual learning. We, the parents, rather have our children in regular in-person schools, but we feel forced to homeschool because teachers and principals can't or don't want to or don't want to be patient, tolerant, and accepting of our underdeveloped, immature children, which puts us parents in the situation to keep our children at home. Do all the schools' jobs and responsibilities to serve our children, taxpayers and communities, or face school principals suspending, expelling, publicly humiliating, emotionally hurting, or calling the police and pipelining our children to jails. Least, but not least, last but not least, I'd like the school district to remove the laptops from classrooms and to resume education with paper and pencils in a traditional manner because oftentimes, the students are using the laptops for non-academic purposes. Thank you very much for your attention.
Okay, that is the last public speaker, so we go into the next section with district employees. And I have a few number of those things. So, let's start off with Kimberly Silva. It's on, it's on top. What can I tell you?
President Hack? Might I suggest that we call the next name too, just so that person's on deck, uh, in case they're outside?
And that's fine, but close enough, but she was the first one, so the next one would be Deb Hubbard. That's fine.
Never liked how my voice sounds in these things, so I'll do my best. Okay, can you guys hear me okay? Okay. Alright, here we go. I got a lot of stuff to say, three minutes, so I'm sorry if I talk quick. I wanna fit everything in, okay?
Go for it.
So, I'm a special education teacher. Um, everything I'm saying is, is really kinda geared towards my peoples, but, okay? So, uh, the class sizes really need to be dramatically reduced. Um, you know, no one comes in and, and does observations. So, no one knows how difficult it is to truly manage students when we have inadequate staffing. You know, we have so many students, inadequate staffing. It's an unsafe and unhealthy learning environment. So, I also, I invite you to come visit SDC classrooms. Come see, uh, even though we are doing a tremendous job, it shouldn't be this hard. I shouldn't go home exhausted, mentally drained to my two-year-old, no patience because we don't have adequate staffing. And it's not how it needs to be. We need to do better to support our teachers. Um, the effects of having such a large caseload within a classroom. You know, students, they, they copy other students' behaviors, really non-preferred behaviors, aggression towards staff and students, disrobing, non-compliance, climbing on furniture, throwing things, yelling. I could go on and on, the behaviors that they pick up from one another because there's too many in the class. They overstimulate each other due to students' extremely loud vocalizations in their behaviors. It causes students to be on edge, not be able to focus on their activity and the ability to self-regulate their emotions, which is in a huge part of my program, which I'm trying to teach my students with autism. Uh, you know, when we have cla-, uh, students who are absent, when we actually have a class of eight to 10, ooh, if you could hear the difference in the classroom and how much we're able to get done in a day just because of our, that particular day, our classes are much lower. So, really, it broke my heart whenever I was listening to the union meeting, they said, you know what? They're not budging on class sizes. What? Why not? Why are we not helping our teachers who are working their butts off? Um, with staffing, you know, sorry, thank you. Uh, the contract doesn't have the proper student-to-teacher ratio, which leaves teachers defending for themselves, asking for more support. Some teachers get more support than the others because it depends how much they advocate, oh crap, for themselves. There needs to be a language protecting teachers and students with proper student-to-teacher ratio because there's too many students, not enough adults, it really creates an unsafe learning environment for everybody. Uh, skipping all that, salary and hours. With gas prices extremely exponentially, sorry, with increasing exponentially, teachers and working families are struggling harder and harder due to high gas prices, food costs, other living expenses. With the projected salary increase for next year, it's not gonna be an adequate raise. I plead to you to give us the 7% increase the union was originally asking for because without it, what do we have to show for our hard work? We can't save money. We're going overdraft every month. If you're not married, I'm sorry, you're probably struggling because you're, you can't support yourself on one.
Deb Hubbard and then Sarah Kertnulinski?
Uh, good morning, School Board President and School Board Trustees. Um, I'm here tonight not only as an AEA member, but really as a district employee, part of the Wellness, Culture, and Climate Team. I wanted to give you, um, some thanks, appreciation. Uh, the last, one of the last times I spoke to you was in October, begging you to pass the SR3 budget that the district was putting forward. Part of that money was to go for mental health for our students and our staff. And I wanted to give you just a brief report. Um, immediately, the teletherapy sessions for teachers and adults of, of the, uh, school, uh, became open in November. And since November, we have had, um, 84 staff members, adults, um, principals and administrators, as well as CSEA and AEA members, ask for, uh, therapeutic support. And 42 have received or are receiving services through, um, wellness, uh, sorry, through hearyou.org, which is the adult, uh, part of Wellness Together. Um, the vendor Wellness Together, um, you approved for middle school and high school teletherapy for students. Of the 48 slots you've paid for, 38 are already unused with many more referrals in process. We are finding that the need exceeds what, what you approved in the budget. Um, also, the in-person therapy required for elementary schools. Um, the two sites have their therapists. The 20 slots that are available, 10, 10 at one school, 10 at the other, 15 have been filled and again, with many more referrals in the pipeline. Uh, Wellness Together is actively trying to hire two more therapists for the four remaining, uh, elementary school sites. And we're pretty sure that those slots are gonna fill up quickly too. So, I wanted to thank you for that. I also wanna let you know that in light of the recent tragedies, um, that we've had, um, in various school sites, um, I wanna share this, if you could take and pass it. Um, really, I want the school board members to- Um, really, I want the school board members to get one of these IIRP cards about restorative questioning. If you look at side two, um, when there was a loss of life at Dozier-Libby, um, we, Dave and myself, part of the WCC team, ran out to Dozier that day, and we went to all the teachers. Because what we've learned from other tragedies is that when teachers don't speak about, uh, an event, a trauma, then the kids walk away thinking that you don't care, but nothing could be further from the truth. Every teacher cares. We just weren't trained in what to say, and we don't know what to say, so we continue to teach math from page ninety-two. We ran out and gave those cards out. Um, side two are the questions that we said, "Teachers, you don't need to know what to say, you just need to know to ask these questions and let the kids talk and process their trauma and grief." Um, just so you know, Dave and I have been going out to Dozier every Tuesday and Thursday. We'll continue that for the next few weeks to, uh, help with some grief counseling. We were also over at the elementary school site today, um, doing some re-entry conferences and also working with their staff. So I just wanted you to know that we are, uh, you know, helping our, our district, our, our kids and our adults. So thank you for your support of that.
Sarah Zarlinsky.
I like Zara Bresha.
And Melody Manning would be next.
Uh, hi, everyone. Uh, good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Sarah Zarlinsky, and I have the honor and tremendous privilege to be a math teacher at, uh, Antioch Middle School. And I'm here for two reasons and two reasons only. Uh, one is to talk to you about class size, and the other is to finally prove to my students that math is relevant in everyday life. Uh, so if you will bear with me, uh, there's going to be some math in here. Don't worry, I'll do it for you though. Uh, simply put, class sizes need to be smaller. And if you'll bear with me, I'm going to go through those. We'll start with geometry. My classroom is about twenty feet by twenty feet, which means it's about four hundred square feet, and that's about the size of a studio apartment. So now I'd like you to visualize, actually, don't use it, it looks like this. Uh, I'd like you to visualize thirty-nine people in that room with furniture. And I'd like you to visualize how easy it would be to ask for help in that situation, how much time I could give each student. I'd like you to visualize if you feel safe, or do you feel claustrophobic, or do you feel overwhelmed being in that small space with so many people? It's a big impact on our kids. And also, knowing that they're safe allows them to open up their minds and experience more learning. So that's step one. The second thing is about word problems. I have a fifty-minute class period. I have at now a cap of thirty-eight kids in my classroom, with me, that makes thirty-nine, with my push and support, that makes forty people in one room. How much time can I give each and every one of my students in that fifty minutes? The answer is one minute and nineteen seconds. That's all they can have from me. And sometimes they need more. Sometimes they need triple, quadruple that amount of time. And it's not fair. It's not fair that I cannot give every student everything they deserve. Now, the district has offered a decrease of thirty-seven. That gives each child three more seconds of my time. In a year, the child with a thirty-eight class cap, they get three hours and fifty-six minutes total. That's it in a hundred and eighty days of learning, that's how much one-on-one time they can have from me. For that thirty-seven, they get four hours. That's it. You only really get five more minutes of time. It's not enough. Those kids need support, they need time, they need space, they need attention. And that's just if we're focusing on math. What if there's a child, which happened this week, who's suffering from something else, something from home where they need me? What am I supposed to do to say, no, excuse me, I have to go deal with this math problem over here? They deserve my time and my attention, and we need to give it to them. The class sizes are too large, and it's not fair. You guys want achievement to go up? The statistics are clear. Every time we decrease class sizes, achievement goes up. The statistics have been done forever from other countries in our own school district, and achievement goes up. It is so important that we give our students everything they need. Please decrease.
Melody Manning, and next would be Kendra Borja.
Good afternoon. My name is Melody Manning, and I teach one hundred and eighty-eight brilliant seventh grade students at Antioch Middle School. I love my students, and I spend countless hours outside of contract time planning inclusive core standard lessons. I tutor, run the GSA and Technology Club, participate on the standards-based learning team, while also being on-site counsel and avid. This round of bargaining has me disgusted. With the look, the lack of concern for AUSD students, the district offered to lower by one student. Part of being an official avid, avid school is making student career and college ready. My first period has thirty-five students. In a fifty-minute block, that gives me one minute and forty-two seconds to teach standards, build community, and get their life ready. COVID and world events have created so much trauma, we're expected to create a safe place and teach at the same time. You tell me how to do that in one minute and forty-two seconds. One of my students came in really upset. They were up all night. They were up all night spoon-feeding their dog because it was dying in their bed. And I can't even talk to them because, like, at that one minute, one minute, how do I teach a hundred and eighty-eight students and be their support system when you can't even lower the classes a little bit? They deserve so much better. We love our students so much that we can't give them enough. We are killing ourselves to make them happy, and we need more from you guys. We need you guys to help us out because we're doing everything, and we cannot keep up. A hundred and eighty-eight students a day that I see with issues like dying dogs, my brother's in jail, there's so many problems that are outside of the education system, so I'm trying to do all of it, and it doesn't work. This is not working. Fix it!
Kendra, and the next speaker would be Amber Dagan.
Good evening. My name is Kendra Borja, and I'm a first-grade teacher at Belshaw. Um, this year has been challenging to all of us in so many different ways, but mostly we're just feeling the effects of this year of distance learning that we've been dealing with. I am incredibly lucky, and I totally understand that. Um, I have nineteen students this year. And with nineteen students, it is a struggle to meet their needs. I cannot begin to imagine what other people are dealing with. I've been teaching long enough, so I remember when we had twenty kids in our class, when we were at twenty to one. The students back then, they really seemed to have fewer challenges, traumas, and extreme behaviors, and they were not dealing with what we're dealing with now, with the fallout of a global pandemic. Now, however, the thought of only twenty students is unheard of. I have absolutely no idea how I could meet the needs of my class if I had ten extra students crammed into my classroom. I know other teachers are facing that right now, and my heart goes out to them. How are they able to handle stations, run small groups, deal with behaviors, manage the incredible learning gap our kiddos are dealing with, and help them cope with traumas they faced over the last two years with twenty-nine six-year-olds in a room? And the class size numbers, as we have heard, just increase as they get older, and the issues that they're dealing with are magnified. But we have the chance to help our students. Smaller class sizes benefit everyone involved, and most importantly, our students. They deserve to have classroom environments that are conducive to learning. As we continue to bargain for our contract, I hope you will join me and the Antioch Education Association and be united for all students. Thank you.
Amber Dagan, and the next one would be Deb Blumberg.
Hi, um, I'll take this off. So, um, my name is Amber Dagan. I am a first-grade teacher at Fremont. I have been a first-grade teacher for seven years. I've been at Fremont for four years. Um, I have a lot to say. The University of Colorado School of Education conducted a literature review of the research regarding class sizes, specifically with Title I schools. Now, I don't know who has done a lot of research on educational research. Most research does not include Title I students, so it tends to be kind of biased. They found that class sizes matter a great deal, especially for low-income and minority students. So I'd have a quote from their story, from the research itself. Based on research literature, I offer the following policy recommendations. Class size is an important determinant of student outcomes, and one that can be directly influenced by policy. All else being equal, increasing class sizes will harm student outcomes. Evidence suggests that increasing class size will harm not only children's test scores in the short run, but also their long-term human capital formation. Money saved today by increasing class sizes will be offset by substantial social and educational costs in the future. The payoff from class size reduction is larger for low-income and minority children, while any increases in class size will likely be most harmful to the, these populations. So hopefully, you guys understand the impact that class sizes have. I have twenty-six students, and I work at Fremont. That's a lot. I have twenty-six students, eight of which regularly need an intense amount of attention from me. So doing small class size, uh, doing small groups is virtually impossible for me. I'm alone, without any support or help of any kind. And I have twenty-six students, eight to ten regularly, every single year, need intense attention from me. I, I can't do small groups. I want to, I do, but I can't. It's hard. So, class smaller class sizes would help, classroom aides would help. Um, but I have not had that a single year that I've been at this school district. Um, if AUSD wants to retain and attract high-quality teachers, it needs to do two things. It needs to support their teachers, and it needs to pay them high-quality wages, so that people want to come here and want to stay. So, I only have fifteen seconds left, so I'm just going to say, it's really hard to feel supported when I have twenty-six students, and I want to do, do my best, but I can't because I'm one person alone with no help.
Deb Blumberg, and then Eric Portillo.
Blumberg? Blumberg?
Deb Blumberg. Mr. Hack. Really? Uh-huh.
Sorry, Deb.
Yeah. My name is Deb Blumberg, and I am a fourth-grade teacher at Mission Elementary. I've been in the district for over a couple of decades now. I'm actually here tonight on behalf of a colleague, Crystal Van Dyke. She's a fifth-grade teacher at Mission Elementary. She has two kids with lots of activities, and she could not be here this evening, so I've offered to read her letter for her. So, from Crystal Van Dyke. "Good evening, Superintendent Anello, Board of Education, and all those in attendance tonight. I am speaking on behalf of all the teachers in this district who have just lived and worked through the most trying two years in our career. First with distance learning, and then coming back after a year and a half of being at home. With these two things, the learning loss of our students is quite apparent in all grade levels. And when I say learning loss, that is not just the academic learning, but the social, emotional learning as well. With that in mind, I am encouraging you during your bargaining meetings with our union to really think about class size. Every year, we are fighting for class size reduction, and every year, it gets pushed aside. If anything's apparent, it should be, that not only do the teachers deserve a cool raise, but there should be a significant decrease in class size across the board. You want us to work with students who are trying to make up for lost time, but you are also expecting us to do that with thirty to forty students in a class? How do you expect us to be able to help these students increase their ability levels in academics and social, emotional learning when we can't give adequate attention to all of the students present in our classes? We are only one person. Think of how much improvement that could happen if we had less students to try to meet the needs of. New and additional programs are not the answer. Programs don't teach students, teachers teach students. But we truly need less students in a room in order to more, to truly meet all of their needs. Thank you."
And the next one would be Maria Villanueva.
Uh, Merrick Bartel, Park Middle School, science teacher. This is going to come as a surprise to many people in the room, but I didn't get into the teaching profession to get rich. I did it because I love to teach, and it's a dream come true that I have a job where I feel like I'm actually enriching the lives of other people. Uh, I get to go to work and do that every day. And, and I think that's true of everybody that's here tonight supporting AEA. But to do that, we need your support. Because I have fifty minutes to connect with thirty students, thirty-plus in some situations. And every student has unique needs. It's not just students that are being supported with IEP plans and 504 plans. We have a very diverse population, and I can only assess the needs of the individual when I can connect with the individual one-on-one. Now, saying that I get a minute and thirteen with every student, even that's not realistic because I have a lesson to teach, right? I'm, even if I spend twenty minutes with them, teaching a lesson, having a conversation with the classroom, how much time does that really leave me to assess the needs of each individual student? It's impossible, it's impractical. I can't do my job effectively, I can't live that dream that I got into education to do when I'm overwhelmed and I'm pressed for time, when I'm coming up against the reality of how much time I have for each kid. Also, I have a family of five, and no one in here is at fault for the rising housing cost and fuel and healthcare and seven-point-five percent inflation. But we all have to deal with that reality that we're facing right now. And with a family of five and their needs, I have to think about the practicality of staying in a profession that's failing to keep pace with the cost of living. My income is effectively decreasing every year. I have to think about how I'm going to support my children's college ambitions and their goals to, uh, you know, attend higher education. And to do that, I need your support. We all need your support. And I will see the remainder of my time. Thank you.
Maria, and then, um, Sam Markort.
Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Anello, and fellow educators. My name is Maria Villanueva, and I teach fifth grade at Jack London Elementary. Um, I've been a teacher at our district for six years now, and the last two have been the most difficult I had ever imagined. I've worked an excessive amount of hours preparing for all the changes that teaching during a pandemic has required, as all of us have. This year, we're being pulled so thin that a lot of brilliant educators are choosing to leave our profession in droves for other careers or going into retirement. In this school year alone at our elementary site, we have had to teach a science curriculum for we've, which we've received no training because we're doing a literacy, um, training, yet we don't have an elementary library open so that our kids can access books to exercise and use those skills that we are trying so hard to teach them. How can we teach literacy and not have, give them access to books? That is ridiculous to me. Um, besides that, we also have to teach a social, emotional learning curriculum to help the kids with all the emotional turmoil that the last two years has left them with, without any training whatsoever. I'm not a trained counselor, I'm not a therapist, and I do my best. But I am not, I know I'm not serving the needs of my children, because they are my kids, and they know that. All on top of teaching through a pandemic that requires constantly changing guidelines that impact our classroom. We can't have them in groups, we can't have them in book, um, in book nooks, we have to think of all the COVID stuff. I have to be a masked police. What do all of these things do? It leaves the educator having to figure out how to deal with behaviors for which we have not been properly trained, that takes us away from teaching. What does that do to students? It makes them apathetic and not wanting to go to school. How do I know this? Because I have children at our schools. And my daughter, who is an amazing artist, she, she asks me every day, can I just stay home? That hurts my heart. We need you to listen to us. This is not a business-as-usual year. If there's anything we should take away from the last two years is that this is the time to make some positive changes. Let's start with treating the people who work in our schools, in our classrooms fairly. Living in the state is a luxury, and as educators, we need to be able to take care of our basic necessities. All the living costs, are the costs of living are going up, yet we're getting short-changed by the people that we're working for. by the people that we're working for. We have had to work without enough support staff, we don't have a full-time VP, without a librarian, with more than 30 students in classrooms during a pandemic when we've been told that being socially-distanced matters, and where we are constantly having to do more with less. We're currently having to install quiet corners in our classrooms, but haven't been told how we're gonna be reimbursed for those rugs, fidgets, and feel-good items that we need to get. I'm asking that you please listen to those of us in the trenches. We are asking for what is fair and what is best for our students. A decent wage increase that covers the cost of living, paying for health benefits, smaller class sizes, and having adequate support at our sites would be awesome. Thank you.
Sam Markort, and Jessica Weston is next.
Good evening, Board members. I'm, uh, Sam Markort, I'm a K-2 second SDC teacher at Marsh Elementary, and I'm here to talk about class sizes. So my classroom is designed for a maximum of 15 students, and currently, there are two adults in the room at all times, except for an hour a day when there's only one of us, because of lunch breaks. My aide has to spend a half hour and is responsible for all 13 students that I currently have, getting them from the cafeteria to the playground. It is incredibly unsafe if a child decides to elope, or if they simply get lost in the shuffle with all of the classes, going to lunch, going to recess. For instance, this year, I got a new student, and on his first day, he eloped from my room. I was alone with my kids. I had 11 students in the room. He ran out, my aide was on her lunch break. What was I to do? Chase after the student? Stay in the classroom. Chase after the student? Stay in the classroom. It was his first day, I'm in the back of the school. It's incredibly unsafe, the amount of students that I'm responsible for, and the amount of students that my aide is responsible for if we are not there. How are we supposed to maintain their safety? How are we supposed to maintain the academic rigor and make sure that they are getting their needs and IEP goals met, when there's just two of us? What do I do when there's a behavior that causes the classroom to evacuate because a kid is throwing chairs at me? My aide is outside with my kids for 80 minutes, 80 instructional minutes, while I deal with a behavior with another adult that I had to radio in. How do I teach with a class size that big, to make sure that they all get their needs met? How do I deal with it when a kid throws a tantrum and kicks me? How do I do that with the class size of 15? And manage them, and make sure that I'm getting their needs and IEP goals? They're all different, all across the board. I am not a mild-mod teacher, I am a moderate teacher. I don't have any students that have mild needs, and those that are, get complimented, "Oh, your, your class is so good," while they're, this kid's running around your room. How do you do that? My students should not have to put up with a kid that's running around, that's out of control, and I can't, and my aide can't, support that behavior, and then ask my kids to learn in that unsafe environment. That's all I've got to say.
Jessica, and then Amanda Fritus.
All right, I'm going off the cuff here, I'm gonna start with something light. Uh, my name is Jessica Weston. Seven years ago, a former principal of mine told me she was moving me from second grade to kindergarten, and I cried for weeks. "Please do not move me to kindergarten, please do not move me to kindergarten, I don't want to teach kindergarten." I teach kindergarten. I have taught kindergarten for seven years. I love teaching kindergarten. I know how to teach kindergarten, and I am good at teaching kindergarten. I have 24 kindergartners in my classroom this year. 24 five-and-six-year-olds who have not been exposed to a normal outside world for two years. These children do not know how to function outside of their house, so I have spent the whole beginning of my school year teaching them how to people. 24 children, 24 five-year-olds, have you spent time with a five-year-old? Imagine 24 of them, and I have the lowest class at my school. 24 of them. I cannot do small groups. I cannot pull my students, who do not know their letters, for one-on-one time, because the rest of my classroom is going nuts. 24 five-year-olds is our average, I could go up to 30, and I am so scared that every day, I'm going to get a new child, and it's going to throw everything off, and how am I going to incorporate a brand-new child into my classroom? We need smaller class sizes. We do. There's questions as to why kids aren't reading at a third-grade level? Because I have 24 kindergartners squished into my classroom, and then those kids who are low move to first grade and are in a classroom with 26 first graders, and they don't get the attention they need, and they're moved to second grade, and then third grade, and then everyone is asking the question, "Why aren't they reading?" Because we don't have the support we need to teach our children. As someone said earlier, this is the year to make positive change, and one of the biggest changes that will yield the biggest results is smaller class sizes from TK to 12th grade. Thank you.
Amanda, and then we have Ken Kent.
Good evening. In an article titled "The Effectiveness of Class Size Reduction" by William J. Mathis, Kruger noted that class size reduction most benefits minority and disadvantaged students, and would be expected to narrow the racial achievement gap by about one-third, and estimated that the economic gains of smaller classes in the early grades outweigh the costs two-to-one. The research is clear, AUSD needs to invest in its students by lowering class sizes. It will give teachers more time to give individualized instruction within the confines of their own classroom. Many times, our students are sent out to intervention groups, but while at these groups, they are missing all of the new material that is being taught in class, putting them even farther behind. In addition to lowering class sizes, AUSD should stop counting dual-immersion classes as part of the class-size average. Dual-immersion is a separate program and should be treated as such. The reality of the situation is that after their kindergarten year, students drop from the dual-immersion program, but no new students are added. When dual-immersion first started at Fremont Elementary, we had two full dual-immersion classes, that's about 50 kids. Now those students are in fourth grade, there are 19 of them. Sorry. The low numbers in dual-immersion greatly impact the rest of the classes. While dual-immersion will get no new students, my class, along with the rest of the fourth and fifth grade, can continue to rise to 32 students each. I don't understand how the district does not see the glaring disparity between having 32 students in a class compared to 19. Please stop counting dual-immersion in our class-size average. I also want to take a moment to mention our facilities here in AUSD. First, I don't know who is controlling the heater and AC, but my classroom, my classroom is always hot. I walk into my classroom at 7:00 in the morning, and that hot air hits me like a brick wall. And my wall, or my, I face the sun, so as the day goes on, my room does not cool. But then, when it's hot outside, does my AC kick on? Nope, never. It is always hot, wearing these masks this year, I, I've had to step over to my door because I feel like I'm going to pass out in my room. My students are asking me for mask breaks. It's unbearable, and quite frankly, it's hurting their learning inside my classroom. Lastly, there is a terrible termite problem at Fremont Elementary. This termite problem has persisted in our D Wing for years, and just to be told, "This is the way it is," is not okay. Jeff Collins tried telling me they are not eating away inside our walls, but honestly, I don't believe him. From everything I have read since having swarming termites in my classroom last week, it is that subterranean termites, which he tells me we have, cause the most destruction. In fact, these termites ate through a wall last year and destroyed some of our curriculum, which is very concerning. Since my students have had very inconsistent access to the library since I've been at Fremont, I have poured thousands of dollars into my classroom library to give my students access to reading materials and to also foster their love of reading. Now, not only do I worry about the structural integrity of the building I am teaching in, but I also worry that my classroom library, that I have invested so much into, will be destroyed. Thank you.
Ken Kent. Next one would be Leslie Adak. Adam?
Hello, thank you for having us today. Um, I just want to say before I get started that I am continually impressed by the eloquence and the passion of AUSD teachers. Thank you so much for what you've said today. Um, now, it won't be a surprise to any of my colleagues, but when I talk to people in general, it seems like this is something that surprises them. Kids don't learn just because you tell them to. They don't try because you tell them to, or because you're the teacher, or because you're the boss. They only try when they feel safe. They only try when they feel heard, they only try when they feel loved. Only then do they even have a chance to develop the confidence, to develop the resilience, to have the courage to risk getting it wrong. And learning, let's not kid ourselves, learning takes courage. The only way to help kids through is through personal connections. Please, give us the time to grow these connections. Kids who feel safe, and kids who feel heard, and kids who feel loved, kids who have positive relationships with adults at school. They don't bring guns to campus, as we've seen recently, at elementary level. They don't put down the kid next to them for being too smart, or for being too heavy, or for being different in any way. They feel safe to ask for help, and can't do it when you're barely keeping your head above water. We need the time. Thank you.
Leslie, and then, uh, Zachary Williams.
Good evening, members of the school board and the district staff. Uh, my name is Leslie Adams, and I teach TK right now at Sutter Elementary School. Um, I'm asking you to please consider lowering class size, it's a serious safety issue, not only because of the pandemic, there's just not enough room to distance, and it's ongoing, but also because, you know, it's hard to keep track if you're a TK teacher of 27 students. Um, and, you know, I had an aide for most of the day, the first month, and then I only got an aide for the transition, and my aide is amazing when she's there, she, like, only get a short amount of time, and she is amazing. But I get her during the transition time, and so for the rest of the day, before January, and my lovely parent helpers came, because we couldn't have parent helpers, I was teaching TK students all by myself for a majority of the day. I can't tell you how difficult that is. The kids can't tie their shoes, they can't put on their coats, you need to help them hold their pencil, their scissors, you know, they don't, I mean, there's just so many things to teach, and it is so difficult when, you know, forget the academics, okay? I do a lot of academic stuff with these kids, um, and I'm really proud of them, but just the other stuff, like, I had a kid whose shoe flew in the air, and, and they couldn't get it on, this was, you know, at, you know, they just were like walking, and they, you know, kicked their foot up, and their shoe went flying in the air, and I'm trying to, you know, I'm trying to work with a student, I mean, it's just stuff like that that goes on all day long with these little tiny four-year-olds, and eventually, they become five, but it's, you know, when you're by yourself, can you imagine how difficult it is? And if you want to really imagine how difficult it is, try wrangling, you know, rounding up 27 kittens, because teaching TK is like working with kittens. You know, they're just, you know, they're here, there, and everywhere. And I am thankful that I have parent helpers now, I'm allowed to, because they, they are so helpful, but, you know, 27 is too many students, and what bothers me is I can't, I can't work one-to-one with every student, and they need it at this age level. I would say 20 would, should be maximum for TK, because you, you can't get to every student and, and thoroughly work with them, and then try to pull them aside, those ones who need extra assistance, it's hard to do that. You know, I've had to have my pa, parent helper step in and help some of these kids, because I'm working still with the assignment, and yet, other kids need additional assistance. So it's quite a challenge, and with a pandemic, you know, having to constantly remind them to put on their masks and, and everything, it's, it's tough. I'm also asking you to please, you know, get our librarians back. You know, COVID lasts only, you know, few days, you know, on, on materials, you know, you could have the material sit for three days, and then the librarian shelves them, and then, you know, there's no reason why kids can't come, um, can't have a library, and also, please, we need a pay increase with gas prices going up tremendously. Thank you.
Zachary.
Hi there, folks. Um, and so, yeah, you've, you've heard a lot today, and hopefully, you got the message. Um, so, my name's Zachary Williams, I teach 11th grade here at Deer Valley. Um, I'm actually transferring out of the district from Alameda, and lo and behold, you can imagine my surprise when I had, uh, 32 students in, uh, Oakland area, and I thought that was big, and here I have, uh, five classes of 38. Um, and so, I teach English, I teach 11th grade English, and I want you to imagine my weekend. Um, I'll be grading essays, it was the first time many of my 11th graders, who are 16 years old, have written an essay. I want you to think about that, um, because of COVID loss, right? Because of the pandemic. And so, I'll be spending roughly, what, 10 minutes an essay? 170 students, about 28 hours of unpaid labor to grade some essays. And so, your job here as, you're a gatekeeper, right? You're here to care about students. We care about students, right? Like, we're here every day. And your job is to help us. And so, that's what we're asking for. You lower class sizes, you take my 170, you make it 100 over five periods, I get to see my wife on Sunday. Right, what you don't acknowledge is, we all work, we plan on our weekends, and you don't pay for that. And we're asking for, you know, wages to go just with cost of living, and you bulk at, what, you're at 3% from what our union said? Right? You're lucky we aren't asking for double digits, right? With this pandemic. And so, you know, I'm 30 years old, they don't make teachers who look like me, I'm a black male, young black male, you know, they don't make them like me, and I connect with my kids, and they love me, you know? They've had a sub the whole year, they didn't learn a lick, and now they have me, and I'm their favorite teacher, or some of them, right? And so, I produce value, but you're not showing that. And I'm asking myself, right, this is the year every teacher asks, "Why do I do this?" We come, we go to sleep with that question. And I'm asking you, "Why do you stop us from doing this dream that we have? Why are you making this so hard? We shouldn't spend, you know, what, it's 8:40, it took an hour and 10 minutes for teachers to talk to you." And we got families, and we work tomorrow, right? I'll teach, you know, 300, you know, I'll teach 100 kids tomorrow, 100 minutes each class. Right, you, there's what, 38 from chairs to the back, there's 38 people, you put yourself one person in this room for 100 minutes, and you see if you can do it. Right, I don't, like, you go to Deer Valley, like, come to our school. And so, we're just asking for you to care, and for you to help us. That's it. Care.
That is the last speech card I have, but I, I can't imagine that anyone sitting in this diet up here doesn't understand what you're sharing with us. I spent a, a few days in a classroom in Antioch, about 30 years, and, uh, I understand. And- I spent a few days in a classroom in Antioch, about 30 years, and I understand, and I appreciate you sharing. So let's take a break for five or six minutes or so, and we'll get back to the agenda. Okay?
Thank you.
Roofing project at John Muir Elementary School. Bids were received and lowest, most responsive bidder is on agenda for tonight's board meeting for approval. The project is scheduled to commence in June 2022, as soon as school closes for summer break. Roofing project at Kimball Elementary School bids are due on March 24th, and that is scheduled to also commence in June 2022. The HVAC project at Antioch Middle School bids were due on February 24th, scheduled to again commence in June 2022. We do have current vacancies in the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. There are currently two vacancies in the committee. We're looking for a member at large and a senior citizen representative. That number will become three when Ms. K. Power term ends on June 30th of this year. She has served three consecutive terms and is not eligible to renew her term. She fills the position of member of a taxpayer organization. The district is actively working to fill these positions as soon as possible. So you out there in the community that's listening, watching us live stream, if you are interested in being a part of the work, go to the district's website and you can join, put in your information to join the CBLC committee. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Any questions? See, because I'm the bomb.
Good job. Good job.
All right, I'd like to introduce Director Lindsay Wisely. She is here with some of her team members to, at the board's request, wanted to hear more information about our early college credit and CTE opportunities, and so I'll turn that over to Director Wisely.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Board. Good evening Superintendent Nanello. I'd like to invite my team to the podium because they have some important information to share about early college credit and our career technical education opportunities. I'm going to go ahead and start the presentation off with our vision around preparing every student for success in college, career, and life. And it really is our responsibility to do that work. So we're very proud of the programs that we have in our district, and we're excited to be sharing with you all the accomplishments we have so far and the work that we're planning to do. So the early college credit program, let's start there. It's a very robust program in our district. We're really proud of all the classes that we have. There's three different ways that students in our district can earn early college credit. So there's concurrent enrollment where students can take classes at LMC outside of their regular day. And then on our high school campuses, we have both dual enrollment and articulated classes. So a dual enrollment class is typically our, they'll have an LMC teacher. We have several teachers in our district who teach both at LMC and at our high schools, and the students take those dual enrollment courses. And then we have articulated courses where our teachers work with the professors at LMC, and then they articulate the classes and match them up so our students can receive that credit through articulation. In the early, to really outline the benefits of early college credit, you know, we first want to just notice that LMC offers these courses free of charge or at a very small fee for the district, or the student, students can earn their credit at the same time that they're going to high school. We know that, you know, that helps to speed up the time that it takes for students to earn the degrees. And then the transition from high school to college is more successful because we're exposing kids at an earlier age. And then all the research shows us that students are more likely to go on to college and then to succeed and graduate from college. So, and then one of the great things about this is it allows students to explore courses early on, which is a real great advantage of this, and hopefully get our students excited to go on to higher education. Moving forward, Antioch High School, they have a very strong program of early college credit offerings. They have dual enrollment, articulated enrollment. You can look at the list there. Fire science, orientation to college. They're looking to expand the program, and Kelly Green, who works with us at LM, she's an LMC employee that helps us with the dual and articulated enrollment, really works in partnership with us to expand our offerings. And I have a slide in a minute where I'm going to show you how we've expanded over the years. But there's some courses we're looking to offer in the spring of 2023, and then a long list of articulated courses at Antioch High School. And just to name a few, there's personal finance, there's careers in teaching, there's AP computer science, and the list goes on. At Deer Valley, there's also courses. The dual enrollment course is great. He's a professor at LMC and a teacher in our district, offering astronomy and astronomy lab. Looking in the future, we're looking and working right now to plan a class around business and QuickBooks. And then the articulated courses, we have a career seminar course. It's our, it's our Get Focused Stay Focused program that we have in our district that our freshmen get to take, our ROP's careers with children, and then more of our astronomy and space science at Deer Valley. And then at Dozier Libby, Dozier Libby also has courses. Their Health Science One and Two are articulated courses. Again, that career seminar, Health Science Three, ROP Emergency Medical Responder, and Anatomy are articulated courses at Dozier Libby. We have really tried to work to, oh, and prospects. Let me, let me focus on prospects next. Sorry, skipped a slide. Prospects has Spanish for the professions, and they also offer career seminar. So as you can see at our high schools, we really are working to encourage our students for early college credit opportunities. In terms of our, our website, we've done a lot of work on our website this year, really getting the postings, LMC creates a great flyer, kind of outlining all the courses that students can take. We have those posted on our website, along with a lot of other information around college, career, and our CTE programming. So I encourage you to take a look at our website. We're trying to make it more accessible and more interactive for our families. So looking at the data, just, and obviously in, in the 2020 year was the pandemic, we had courses going, but we are looking to increase. And my last meeting with Kelly Green really kind of was exciting because we're, we're really beefing up the options for students and looking to create more opportunities at, at all of our high schools. So, you know, we're proud of the fact that the early college credit program is growing in our district. Our college and career centers, so there's a lot, we, in our LCAP, we have college and career center technicians at our, at both of our, at Deer Valley and at Antioch High School. They post information about various workshops, college application workshops, information about FAFSA. They do a lot of, they work with outreach and invite colleges in, community colleges, colleges locally, military, ASVAB coordination. They help coordinate college and career fairs. They run the scholarship programs. I know many of our board and families come to scholarship nights where we've connected with a lot of community members who donate quite a bit of money to support our students, ACT SAT fee waivers, college rep visits. They do the BID of Reality, which is a financial literacy workshop. So there's so much going on in our, you know, college and career centers, and we're really proud of that. I think what makes AUSD really special is the work that our work-based learning coordinators do. So I'm really excited to introduce you to Amber Martin and Kendra Ebinger, so they can share with you a little bit about what we're doing with work-based learning, because I think it really makes us unique in Antioch.
Good evening. My name is Amber Martin. I'm one of the work-based learning coordinators for the district. I primarily support Antioch High and Deer Valley High School, but we work collaboratively as a team to provide opportunities to students district-wide. So work-based learning is an integral part, component of our programs. It's the connection between instructional class curriculum and real-world relevancy. So it helps students connect the, what they're learning in the classroom to real, real-world career opportunities, and it connects them to higher, greater understanding of different careers available to them and what they may be doing in those careers. A lot of what we do is any activity that falls under our continuum. So you can see up there, there's three different areas of the continuum, career awareness, career exploration, and career preparation. An example of career awareness is guest speaker. So we have a variety of business and industry partners who will come in, especially this year, virtually into a classroom and share about the work that they do and the career path that got them to those roles. Under career exploration, it may be a job shadow opportunity where students can get a feel for what they would do in that specific career. And then career preparation, we're really proud to share that we provide certifications, industry-recognized certifications such as CPR, OSHA 10, as well as connecting students with internship opportunities. So with this slide, this is as of January 2022, and it just goes over the number of work-based learning experiences that students have had so far this school year as of January 2022. So there have been over 1,300 work-based learning experiences, anything from a guest speaker to a job shadow to an internship with, at Antioch High School, 62 at Bidwell, 671 at Deer Valley, and over 2,400 at Dozier Libby. You might wonder what some of those differences are, why Dozier has such a high number of those. The CTE teachers and the program teachers there, they often teach the same class throughout all their classes, so they would have that same guest speaker come to every single one of their classes. Whereas some of the other high schools, they may only teach one, two, or three sections of a specific course, and so they only have a smaller number of students that are participating in those activities. I am going to go ahead and turn it over to Kendra to share additional information.
Thank you, and good evening, Board President and Trustees. So we can't do this work alone, her and I. We need partners, and we need lots of them. And so this slide shows you all the partners that we rely on to bring these work-based learning experiences to our students. So industry partners, we partner with companies such as Kaiser Permanente, Biotech Partners, How Money Works, Comcast, and Junior Achievement, just to name a few. These are industry partners. These are people that work in the industry, that come into our classroom and give students a hands-on experience in what that industry or career may look like. Education partners, so we not only partner with companies to provide industry-specific activities for students, we partner with lots of educational organizations to provide information on college, the different types of universities, community college, and trade schools that students may be interested in joining after exiting secondary schools. This is really important because for many of our students, they will not go to college. They will enter the workforce when they leave high school. And so our goal is to really equip them with the skills they need to do that. And we can't do that just by classroom instruction alone. We need to give them that relevancy and that hands-on experience. And so that's what this work-based learning is all about. So with that, we, I will turn it back over to Director Wisely, and she'll talk about the different industry sectors that we have here in California and the ones that we offer our students here at AUSD.
Thank you, Kendra and Amber. I really do appreciate the work that they do for students. It really does create so much engagement and makes it very relevant, so the students are really, you know, connected to the work. So there's 15 different industry sectors in California. They're illustrated there. You can see from agriculture, arts and media, the list goes on, fashion and interior design, public services, transportation. You can, you can see that, that visual there. We have nine of those industry sectors represented in AUSD. And just to give you a little bit of an overview, we have eight CTE programs across five campuses. We have 20 pathways, nine of the 15 industry sectors, 31 course offerings, 91 articulated courses, and 1,500 students in articulated courses. And I'm a pretty competitive person, so just to give you a regional overview, Pittsburgh offers six CTE sectors and 23 courses. Liberty Union offers 12 courses, but AUSD, we have nine sectors and 31 courses. So we're very proud of the work that we're doing here in Antioch. I'm actually also participating in a special program through the California Department of Education for leadership development in this area, and often colleagues from other districts are very impressed with the work that we're doing and the, and the programs that we have running in our district. Moving on, so you can see there's a list of programs that go into detail. I'll let you kind of look through those on your own. You've heard from various high schools who've given presentations and board meetings showing you, I think Antioch High School did a very nice job of showing you some of the, the programs they have in their school and the pathways that are running, but there's a long list in our district that's impressive. In terms of what we're doing right now to, for outreach, we, we've talked about updating our pathway webpages. We're not, right now, working on videos and really trying to make, help our eighth graders and our middle school students really understand the pathways. So we're making YouTube videos, we're using social media, we're working with our DVTV program and our media tech program at Antioch High to have students create some videos for us. We've done a lot of outreach, and we've also offered academy nights. It was a little challenging this year, but that's why we really beefed up our website and the videos that were available. And one of the things we were really proud of is that we made the process digital for parents to help their students select pathways this year where they went into the Ares Portal. 95% of our parents were able to do that. It was a very streamlined process, and then we were able to send the students a congratulations email to their Outlook email, and then a letter home to parents. So that was a, a new way that we've been able to, you know, help, help our middle school students connect with pathways. And then I just, I finally want to say that we really are working on helping our students have high-wage, high-skill, high-demand jobs. That's really the goal of our career technical education program, and I couldn't do it without the wonderful work of our, our CTE team, the work-based learning team. Kevin Jones is not here tonight, but he does an incredible amount of work as our teacher on special assignment. We have lead teachers in the district, counselors, a whole slew of teachers who teach all these courses, site administrators who help do this work. So I'm just really proud of the programming in our district, and I was just really happy to share with you tonight all the things that we have going in AUSD. Thank you.
President Ha? I do. So this was a wonderful presentation. Thank you all for putting this together. I think I said this at the last meeting, I was dual-enrolled when I was at Prospects. Actually took a class from Mr. Atkins, who's the astronomy teacher at Deer Valley. So I can't say enough about how beneficial this is, because it does, I would have never known about college personally, and so it works. The only question I really have is, so I'm looking at our, the industry sectors, and I see, you know, we have, I think it's, how many of these? Like nine of them, I believe, we have represented in our work-based learning specifically. And I'm wondering if you can illuminate maybe any of the challenges, because I know a lot of us, you know, I think even just tapping into our own networks as we're talking to folks, you know, could potentially bring some more folks into the fold. You know, like I noticed agriculture, natural resources, is that because there's not classes? Or is it because there's not partners out there?
Yeah, we just haven't developed a pathway program in that specific industry sector. It's not out of the question. One of the challenges, I would say, is finding credentialed teachers in these specific areas. That can be a hurdle for us, but I know our, our HR department has done a really great job in recruiting into these nine sectors, and so we're always looking at ways we can expand and, and work with, you know, growing our program.
Thank you.
Yes. I have a lot. I'm excited about this. I actually used to work in workforce development. I did that for a number of years, and that's kind of where, can you guys hear me? That's kind of where my interest, and you know, thank you for going, answering questions in email and sort of communicating that way. So thank you. You know, so you mentioned sort of the community outreach and all those things, and I know some of these questions you may not have answers to today, but I do want to continue the dialogue so that we can continue to understand what we are. In terms of the, the types of students that are enrolled in these programs, can you, can you give us, I mean, because again, there's, how do I say this? Can you give us a little bit more information about the types of students that are attracted to these programs and actually sort of participate in the programs?
Yeah, great question. There's a lot of funding right now coming in for equity and access to really expand, you know, the programming for all students. We're really proud that we've been able to expand into our alternative ed high schools into a consumer services pathway, so that we just launched that this semester. So, you know, typically, I'll give you an example, engineering in the past at Antioch High School has really attracted a lot of male students, and I'm really proud of the work that Principal Rocha has done and that pathway in particular, because they've done a lot of outreach to young ladies to encourage them to pursue the engineering program. They've done outreach into the middle schools to try to let the students know that, you know, they can break down those barriers, that, you know, those glass ceilings that have kind of been set up in our society. So they've really increased the number of girls over the years who are participating in, in engineering. But we do want to try to, you know, anything that is blocking our students, you know, socially or culturally or, you know, within society, we want to make sure that they know that, you know, they can pursue anything they want to pursue. And I think the work that Kendra does specifically in middle school, really with outreach, I think the empowerment program's a great example, the King's Conference, Dr. Lewis, you participate in the King's Conference. I think those are great examples where we do try to reach our, our middle school students so they really know that, you know, we hope that they pursue anything they want to pursue in life.
Thank you for that. And so there's a, I mentor a lot, you know, I participate in, I mentor a lot in the district and all those things, so some of the students that I talk to, you know, I ask them about these programs, and they weren't aware. So can you give me, I mean, I know the website is there, there's outreach and communication, so I guess I'm interested in how do you reach those students who may not necessarily be as involved academically or maybe on the bubble because they're disinterested in school? This is a program I know for a fact, as a first-gen student, that could pull, you know, those students in, so can you give me a little bit?
I love that you asked that question, because when we started this year, my team really talked about how we're reaching our middle schoolers, and I think it's a real improvement area for us. So we, we've done a lot this year to try to really get the message out, to try to do outreach. We're working with our counselors to do presentations in the classroom, to do more work-based learning opportunities, bringing guest speakers into the middle school. And then I think really an effort to, I think we're, we're trying hard at middle school right now, but we really need to bring it down also into our elementary schools. And so we're, I think that's a goal for us, is to look at elementary schools. So I appreciate you asking that. I think it's a work in progress, and it's certainly an area where we can continue to grow.
Okay, and if I can support, you know, we can talk offline, ways that I can get involved in support, within reason. I have a bunch of questions. I'll just, I'll hand it off, because I can be here all night.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis.
Yeah, I think Dr. Lewis touched on a number of my points. I think I want to ask it a little bit more pointedly. Do we have the data to be able to stratify on things like race, ethnicity, socioeconomic status, all those different protected groups? Because I think it'd be great to be able to, again, continue to kind of push for that culture in our, in our organization as a district and see what ways we can attract some of these people.
Yes, we absolutely can do that. We have everything in Ares, and we can pull it through a query. Every student is tagged by, by academy, so that would be easy for us to provide that report.
Very cool. Yeah, because I'd love to say more of that, because I have, I have a lot of very great things to say about things like dual enrollment and, you know, career technical education. I myself am a product of both of those programs, a very strong product of career technical education. You know, I went to Dozier Medical High School, and I've been through the wide range of what it means to be in career technical education, from being a student to coming back as a guest speaker. I've taken students to Washington DC to advocate for Perkins funding to continue to fund things like career technical education. So this is something that is very important to me, and when I think about my own journey and the successes I was able to have, a lot of that is because of programs like this. And I want to make sure that students that come from backgrounds like me have access to these types of programs, that know that they're viable solutions, that know that these programs are not exclusive all the time to entering the workforce. They can work with things like college entry opportunities. That career technical education in college are not always distinct things. People that go on into the workforce at times go back to college. People that go to college go on into these trade jobs and these career technical education jobs, and that there's a lot of intermixing of these things and that they don't have to be completely siloed categories. So thank you for the work that you're doing here. It's, you know, it's impacted me, and we have an opportunity to make sure that we are continuing to impact the students who may benefit the most from these types of programs.
Can I hop in really quickly? So Trustee Household, I was laughing, she was looking at my notes. I was looking at the education partners, and I put no University of Hawaii.
We will fix that, Dr. Lewis.
It says nuh-uh on there. I was like, nuh-uh.
No UH. As an alum. As an alum, you know.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Where are the trades in this?
So that's a great question. So I think things have kind of shifted away from, from saying trades to more of the career technical, because it's, it's really kind of connecting students to high-demand, high-wage jobs, so really trying those high-skill jobs. So when you look at, you know, you look at the, the industry, so let me get to the chart here.
I guess I want to see if it's industry, does that include, you know how they used to come into the classroom? I don't know if they do that anymore for the apprenticeships?
Yes, they do. We do connect, so for example, the Engineering Academy has a construction pathway where a lot of the apprenticeship programs, and, and they come in and they work with the students, and they offer internship poss, Kendra, Amber, do you guys want to speak to that? Because you do a lot of work with our apprenticeship program.
Yes, so what we have usually referred to as trades, they now call industry sectors, right? So each one of those partners represents a different industry sector, and they offer a variety, especially when we get to the career preparation and training categories of that continuum. We're really looking for internships and apprenticeships and hands-on learning experiences on the job site. And for our students, we generally try to advocate for paid internships, right? We need to put money in their pockets because we want them to make those connections between working a high-scale, high-demand, high-wage job. So yes, we do offer various internships through those business partners that would normally be called trades. We also do work with some of the local unions for some of these experiences that the students then have in the classroom or to support them as they exit second year.
And how is that done? In other words, they used to go through the classrooms. What do you do now? Do they have a fair where all of them are there and kids can, students can go by and take a look?
Sure, so we do it in a couple of different ways, and it's generally very site and academy specific.
Okay.
Because, for example, at Dozier Libby, a lot of the medical facilities will offer internships in spring and summer, so we partner with Kaiser Permanente, offers an internship. John Muir Young Healers offers an internship, and Dozier Libby students are included to apply for all of those internships. They do come on to campus or came on virtually in the past year to then present that information and give all the links and all the great things that the students would need to then apply. I can let Amber speak to the other academies and how they work with the internships and apprenticeships.
Yeah, and just to specifically address the construction and building trades, at Antioch High, there is a building and construction trades program, so it, it really is kind of an opportunity presented more often and more frequently there. But most of our construction and trade partners can only hire 18 and up, so oftentimes they'll target our seniors, right? So they'll come into our senior classrooms, they'll share about opportunities. We also partner with ABC NorCal, you'll see on that education list. They are a non-union trade training facility, and they prepare students for trade opportunities as well. But we are in current conversations with Shay Holmes about offering internships to our exiting seniors this year who are interested in construction careers, and they typically open that to all seniors district-wide. So it doesn't just have to be students in the construction program at Antioch High, it's open district-wide. So last spring, we did a virtual trade and construction career fair where we had five different trade and business partners come in. It was opened up district-wide where students could pop in and hear about a variety of different career opportunities within the trades and construction industry.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to reiterate Trustee Household's point, and it's more of a question. So if we, if there were opportunities, or are there opportunities for more companies to get involved, to offer more internships? Is there a formalized process for that? And if so, can, you don't have to give it to us now, but maybe share it with us, because I think that, I'm hearing that there's potentially some opportunities that we could.
Absolutely. We often, we put out a newsletter about quarterly, like three times a year or so, and on there we always include a link for a forum where employers or business partners can get engaged with our students and get connected with us. And once we receive those responses, we reach out, we make those connections, and we see where we could get them engaged and, and connected.
So would it be possible for, and I'm directing this to our Super-
So would it be possible for, and I'm directing this to our superintendent, for the board to be on that kind of mailing list, whatever one, whatever distribution list for their quarterly newsletter? And then also I just wanted to kind of circle back to something that Vice President Hernandez said about stratifying the data. I saw that a lot of us were nodding our heads, but I'm not sure if we were giving explicit direction. But I would like to see that data come back if it is just something that's already in Ares as in a Friday board in the spirit of what trustee Dr. Lewis was saying and in continuing the conversation, so.
I see at least three heads nodding. So we'll be happy to do that. We'll include it in the Friday board. And also we can probably include your newsletter unless you want to send it. We'll send a link in the Friday board. To the board.
We haven't yet finalized our most recent one, but we'll be sure to share that as soon as it's ready.
And I did want to thank all of you for the hard work that you're doing because again, our kiddos need this. College is not for everybody, you know, it's not for everybody. But having options in terms of understanding what a career path looks like is extremely important. Coming from a household where a career path wasn't something that was a dinner table conversation, these types of opportunities are actually what create those pipelines into careers, into those life things. So thank you for all the, all the hard work that you are doing and thank you for this wonderful presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good. Let's go forward to hearings which are none, other presentations, there are none. Consent items, we have A through J.
I move approval.
I was going to ask if any had any questions. Do they have any questions on this? Okay, now.
Second.
I move approval.
Second.
All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? It passes, all right. We're to number 12, action items. That's right? Action items. A, 2021, 22, second interim report, Jessica.
Good evening again. We're here this evening for the board to look and adopt our second interim budget. As you'll recall, the board adopted our budget on, for 2122 on June 24th, 2021. It's our obligation to bring forward to you after that budget, a first and second interim, as long as we remain in good standing, which we have. A third interim is not required. So this evening, I'm going to provide you with the second interim report, which is our financial status as of January 31st, 2022. So what's the purpose of the second interim? It's to detail any changes that have happened since the adopted budget in accordance with the state adopted criteria and standards. And to communicate to both the board and the community, the overall financial status of the district as it existed on January 31st, 2021. The important part on this sheet, because it has a lot of numbers, is to look at the difference column on the far right. And that details the changes that have happened since, all the way from the first, the adopted budget to the first interim to today or January 31st. So our changes in total revenues, which I will be outlining on the next slide, is about $3.7 million. Our expenses, because a lot of those revenues are for specific purposes, so those expenses have equated almost $3.7 million as well. But we have a net difference of $95,000. So what were those changes? Our revenues, we did receive ESER III and ESER III is a little bit different. We recognize revenues as we're expanding, expending them. So you'll remember that plan was about $30 million and under our accounting standards, we recognize it as we are, are spending down that money. So that was about $969,000. We've received the effective, the educator effectiveness grant, which this board did approve a plan on. And we have received additional money in our ACES grant. And I believe Director Cannon had mentioned that at one of our prior meetings as well. We were very lucky, Director Wisely did seek out a CDPH grant around our COVID clinics and that is revenue that we are now recognizing as local. And Mr. Berger House, Director Berger House was critical in going for a, the COPS grant, which for us is around safety issues such as lighting, cameras and things of that nature. So that additional revenue was a little over $1 million. So with the new revenue, there are expenditures because all of those grants do have specific purposes and you'll see those expenses outlined below. We are in the process of, we've gotten quotes at some of our schools to start setting up those surveillance cameras and the lighting. So as you look at our components of our funding, did you have a question? It's, it's up to you. With, that is our components of our ending fund balance, you will always see a revolving cash. We, the law requires we have a 3% for designated economic, have it designated for economic uncertainties. This board has adopted a resolution to bring that up by 2% and you can see that we are still meeting that 2%. We are designating some money for structural deficit because as the board is aware, much of our funding over the last few years has come in one time. And if we want to, and we do want to continue many of the services that we've provided for our students, we have to have a funding source in order to do that. So as the one-time money is no longer available, we would need to put that into other funding sources. So we do have a 10.21 projected ending balance. I want to remind the board that collective bargaining has not been completed. So there is, that would also be recognized when those negotiations are complete. So pursuant to California Education Code, we not only have to show that our financial condition for this year is met, but also that we're able to meet our financial obligations for the next two years. The multi-year projections are based on what we know today and that changes regularly. So as we go through the assumptions, I'm going to tell you some of the areas where we do anticipate that there might be some changes. However, without an adopted budget, we can't in good conscience put them into our second interim report. So as those changes, the board will be updated and we will make changes to our documents. Just a slight reminder around what all of us have been hearing about for a long time. We have declining enrollment across the state of California and COVID has really had an impact on our average daily attendance because between quarantine and students being out, they're not able to be in class. So there was some anticipated, a loss that was going to happen. There is a lot going on in the state around this issue. I do expect there to be some changes when the budget is finally adopted and it seems like they're going to look at something towards a three-year trend, which will definitely benefit not only Antioch, but most districts in the state of California. The one thing that is continuing to go up is our contribution rates to our pension plans. So some time ago, STIRS had an increase that was over a period of time that would continue to increase. And you see that on the chart here going back to 2021. We're currently at 22.91 for PERS. I'm sorry, this is PERS. I think I said STIRS. PERS next year is going up to 26.10. And there is nothing in the January budget that adopts this from the employer's standpoint. So right now, we have to plan on that going up. It will, for PERS, it continues to increase to the 26, 27 school year and I will show you that on a chart a little bit later. Cal, and by the way, CalPERS percentage increase for next year is about 3.19%. For CalSTRS, it has also continued to go up, but next year it will, it will flatten and it will cap out at 19.10%. So the increase in STIRS for next year, again, with no indication that there's going to be relief from this for the districts, it will go up by 2.18% and that is a cost that is for the district for every employee in the STIRS system. I just wanted to give a snapshot of our rate increases going back all the way to 2014 in both STIRS and PERS. And you can see it has been a, not gradual increase, but it's been a pretty sharp one. So we have to account for that as we look. But STIRS will flatten after this next year while PERS will continue to rise through 23, 24, or 24, 25. I talked a little bit about the multi-year projection and I want to talk a little bit about what some of our assumptions are. So for the 2122 school year, COLA was 5.07. That's a known factor, so that has been placed into our budget. Next year, we are anticipated to be at 5.33. Again, that's what we have in January, so that's what we used as our assumption with the third year out being at 3.50. Our projected enrollment, because we don't know what's going to happen at the state level, we have kept that with what we have been doing, which is a gradual decline over the next three years. So you will see that in, in the projected enrollment and our attendance, we have kept flat as well at 91%. This year, it's been lower than that because of COVID. So I, I don't do the positive or the negative. I keep it steady until we actually know what the state's going to do. I've talked a lot about the CalSTRS and CalPERS, so I won't go through those again. But what that leaves us with is the combined multi-year projection. And as you can see, the important line with all of these numbers is the second to the end along, which is our ending fund balance along with our percentage. So right now, our projected ending balance would be 12.14. But again, we still have to complete collective bargaining and any other unanticipated costs. Next year, it would drop to 7.84 and at the third year out, we're at 5.19. So we would still not only meet the state requirement of 3%, but we would meet the board's requirement as well. And this is without any changes to our existing staffing. The components, again, this is just a breakdown each year about what that would be. And you see it equals the percentages that I've previously talked to you. I just wanted a little bit more breakdown if you wanted to see where that money is scheduled. The one thing I do want to talk about is a couple of things in the, in the January proposed budget and one is the expanded learning opportunities. This is a large portion of Governor Newsom's proposed budget. It is a very specific restricted program. It is probably also the most controversial up there right now. And it is a significant amount of money to schools. Right now, that program has work, our school days of about nine, nine hours per day. That can be done through things like our ACES program and so forth. But it's very restrictive along with a six-week summer school program. That may or may not change a lot along the years as, as they're negotiating, but that is what it stands at now. So what are some of the things that were not included in the, in the proposed budget? Well, they didn't give us any pension relief and that would be big. So I'm hoping that as negotiations go on, that that is a, a cost. There is, when you read the media, it says there is that in the, in the budget, but it's the state's obligation. It is not the district's obligation. So ours would continue to go up. The current COLA is what's mandated by law, but there is no augment in COLA, which we did receive last year. And as you've heard earlier, people's cost of living is going up higher than what we're seeing as the cost of living that's going out because that ended last year. That's what they base it on. So they did not augment it, which I know is also a conversation up at the state level as well. And then what, what we were hoping to get is the unduplicated pupil count that is based on our lower socioeconomic, based on your meals. That's not, the application process is not required anymore, so parents are not filling that out. So there isn't anything in the law yet that accounts for that for school districts. We continue to strategize about how to get those numbers and, and meet our obligations. But I think statewide, school districts were hoping for some support in how to deal with that at the, at the local level. So under a first interim, based on our first, our multi-year projection, there are three ways that this district can, and that we can certify as the CBO and as the superintendent. One is that the district has a positive certification and that is that we will be able to meet its, our financial obligations for this year and our subsequent two years. Qualified, which says we may not be able to meet our obligations unless we make some changes to our budget to adjust it to meet those needs. And then finally, a negative, which says we will not be able to meet it as it exists today. I'm happy to report, we have a positive certification that we're recommending to the board this evening, that we will be able to meet our obligations and move forward with the programs and systems that we have. So this is just a timeline of where we're at. In March of 2022, we are doing our second interim. We will have an interim audit that will come to you in May. And then we will be back to the board for the 2223 budget in probably June, as we know more from the state. The proposed budget is expected to come out in May, the May revise. And there is currently a school services, which does the seminar around what's in the budget, will be on May 20th. So we will have more information at that time. I do want to thank Mia Cancio, our director. I could not do any of this without her. She has an amazing team in business services and I'm lucky that they work with me. So thank you.
Thank you.
I have one question. So, and it's kind of a little bit of a two-parter. So I'm curious about our economic uncertainties because this was a resolution that was done before my time on the board. And I think that I can, you know, make assumptions about why we bumped up from 3% to 2%. And this actually might even be a question for Superintendent Anello. But why did we choose to go, you know, an extra 2% over what's mandated? And really what I'm driving at here, as you know, our teachers tonight were begging us to take action now. And I'm wondering, even reducing this by a, you know, maybe we go from 5% to 4% or even back down to the 3%, I just feel like $5.1 million is a lot of money that we could maybe have a little bit more room to bargain with our AEA. So I'm just curious about like the rationale and then also supplement to that, how could we get rid of that if we didn't want that anymore?
So a couple of things, and it was before my time when it was recommended. And I still think it's good business practice because times were very volatile at the time that it was done. I personally have come to this board or boards before you to waive it at certain times based on the needs of the district. And we always have that ability to bring it back based on what we need.
Well, I would like to see that come back at a future meeting, maybe the next meeting, so that we can have a more, because that seems a little bit outside of the scope of this. But I would like to have that discussion to see if that's a direction the board would want to go in because our teachers clearly need help right now. That's it. Thank you guys so much. This was really great.
Can I add to that? I think that at the time, it was a safety issue and there was a security issue. And I think it's, it's kind of available to be used when needed and it's up to you to bring it forward. When we were, because this is where we talk about where we can go and how far we can go. And this is just our extra little money that we have in the bank in case crises come in.
And it's one time. So I want people to remember, it's your savings account. Once you use it, it's gone. So having an ongoing cost is, and I agree with all of you. We have often had to bring that back down to the 3% to be able to provide everyone with what they need, students, staff and everyone else too.
I think it was also the issue of declining, for us now is the declining enrollment. Before, I don't know what it was, because that was the, just boards before.
Yeah, we have declined slightly and actually not to the same extent that many districts have. We've accounted for that over the years. And I think Dr. Lewis has asked me before around the surrounding districts, some of them didn't account for that. So we have taken that into consideration in here. So anything the state does is a positive. It will only go up.
Yeah, so I did want to highlight and thank the business services team for the dedication and foresight to sort of prepare for some of these things, because I know that there are a number of districts, what I'll call any out, as I said in the last meeting, that are closing schools for a number of reasons. Some foreseeable, others not so much. So I did want to acknowledge that. A little bit off topic, but, you know, during the presentation, you mentioned that there was some money, I think it's from the COPS grant, that funding would be spent on cameras and things like that. Would those be inward-facing or community-facing, or a mixture of both, or is it not?
They're mostly, well, they're a variety, and we're getting quotes around the schools. The three that I believe we have, and there's only six schools in the grant, it's our Antioch, actually, I don't believe Antioch High is, because modernization took care of that. It was Deer Valley, Dozier-Libby, Park, Antioch Middle, Dallas Ranch, and
Black Diamond.
And Black Diamond. I'm also looking at other funds to do some of our alternative schools, because I think, even though they're not included in the grant, they're needed. So so far, we've received quotes on Live Oak, Dozier-Libby, and Antioch Middle School.
And we are planning, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, go ahead.
We are planning on going out for the next round of COPS grant for the same thing, for those needs as well. We haven't seen it posted, but we look for it every day. If I can circle back, my recollection was that it was a very volatile time when the board adopted that five percent, and it was also in an effort to, when you get your bond rating, it affects your rates, your interest rates. So it's, it was, we were going for some bond rating, we had the Antioch High, and it was a way to make the money go farther, so it was a longer-term approach when you have an adopted resolution.
And we are going out for a bond again.
Yeah. One more question. So in terms of the cameras, it's, I mean, it's a conversation that's happened on a number of different levels, but in terms of the cameras, and once they're installed, who would have access to the information on them?
Mr. Gangler is in charge of our cameras at this point.
Only administrators or authorized personnel would be able to have that, usually it's like a principal or vice-principal, or an office admin assistant, but it's all controlled and logged, but access is kept minimal and only to a business need.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a question, and it's likely a much larger conversation than a quick back-and-forth. But I'm wondering if we have the capacity and if there's benefit to potentially doing a third interim, because I know that, you know, districts that have a negative certification have to do it, but that there are a number of school districts that do that as a best practice, kind of regardless, and especially it seems like we have a number of different uncertainties kind of going on here. So I'm wondering if that, if, you know, what your thoughts are on that, and if that's something that may benefit us in terms of getting a better sense of, you know, what budgets are going to look like.
Well, I think we look at our budget always. Third interim would be filing something with the state, so I would not recommend that. But, you know, we do updates all the time, and so being able to look at our budget, and as we're adopting and preparing for the next budget, we're doing that on a daily basis. We're also going to have to do, prepare for the audit as well as close our books. So even though it's not a formal, it has to go to the state's and the county on this, all these forms, we are looking at the budget and would be able to update where we're at. And always, when the May revise comes in, that's when the biggest changes come around. But as we're ending the year, we start going through, you know, it's a long process. You have to go through every PO, see what's being spent, what's likely to come through. We have already gone through on all of our vacancies. You start looking at how much of your substitute money was spent, how much you anticipate having at the end of the year. That happens whether or not you have a third interim.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the second, the 2021, 22 second interim report.
I'll second.
Aye.
You heard earlier from Ms. Wilson about our bid for the MIR. We are having a roofing replacement. The bid came in at two million two hundred and fourteen. That is slightly under our budget for that, so I would ask the board to approve this this evening.
I'll move approval.
Second.
And that's for the award, a bid and contract for the roofing replacement project at John Muir Elementary School.
Correct.
So in front of the board this evening, classified, our classified unit, or CSCA, is presenting its initial proposal, and Mars will be next, as we begin negotiations with the CSCA group. They do have a full contract open, so you will see a lot more items on these proposals than when it's a, in the middle of a contract, and it's just salary benefits and two items. So I would ask the board to accept the proposal from CSCA this evening.
I'll move approval to accept the initial proposal from the California School Employees' Association for the twenty-one, twenty-two to Antioch Unified School District. I think that might have been a typo.
Second.
Give me three seconds. Okay, cool. All voters say aye?
Aye.
Close?
Who can I credit the second to? Antonia? Thank you. Trustee Hernandez, or Vice President Hernandez, thank you.
And as I stated, this is our initial proposal to CSCA to move forward with the same negotiation session.
I'll move approval to accept the initial proposal from Antioch Unified School District for the twenty-one, twenty-two to the California School Boards Association.
Second.
Okay. I'm first, it's seconding.
First and second, okay. All voters say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? Five-zero, okay. Item number thirteen, items for discussion, discussion, information, discussion, action by the board.
Mr. Chair? Item thirteen, I believe, is the one that I had brought up. Number eight, I'd like to take that and table it for the next meeting, please. I'd like to pull it for the next meeting.
Trustee Rocha, it's actually an interesting conversation, if you don't mind if I add a question?
I don't know that you can answer if the person who put it on has pulled it.
Oh, you cannot?
I do not believe so. Sorry.
I mean, we'll
It's no longer on the agenda.
I'm pulling it for next week to talk, I mean, next meeting to talk about it.
It's the supplement, yeah.
Postpone it. I'm just pulling it for next meeting.
Any objections to that?
I just would, a
I'm not going to get it up.
Point of clarification, if it's not being taped, if it's not being pulled, then we need a motion, right? If it's to table, or if it's to continue it to the next meeting?
Okay, I'll make a motion then to rescind the motion to form a separate Trauma and Grief Resources Responsible Committee to the next meeting. I'd like to move it to the next meeting at this time.
I'll second that.
And I just want to make a comment that I can't, in good faith, support moving this motion, moving this to another time. I think this shouldn't even be a discussion at all. I don't think we're doing enough when it comes to the mental health of our students. I think that this shouldn't come on here. And so, yeah, I just want to make that very clear, that we need to be doing more work for our students. There's things happening. There is an incident that happened today, and I've been saying this, and several other board members have been saying this consistently, that we need to be doing work, and this is simply an opportunity to asking to do work for our students to make things happen to, for the safety of our students, and every day that we delay doing this is more harm to our students.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm not eliminating it. What I'm wanting to do is bring back information to speak about this committee, and so I just want to have the time for the next meeting to be able to do that.
We do have our report next meeting also, if that informs your decision in any way on our, what we're currently doing.
Yeah, so that's kind of the question I was going to ask. Could we get a sort of a listing of?
Yep, we're getting a full report next meeting.
So if we can get a listing, I'm sorry.
And it might inform the committee.
And that's fine, because then what it will allow us to do is to understand if any existing gaps, or any gaps exist, and if we need to supplement those in, you know, ways we can. I think that would create a healthy conversation.
I think we know that gaps exist.
Yeah, I mean, of course. I mean, but we would be able to identify those gaps.
And the item that we're asking to table is this item that says rescind the motion. I'm absolutely always open to talking more about the mental health of our students. I am not open to, you know, I don't support talking about rescinding the motion to form a group, a committee that's going to look at the mental health of our students.
And for that reason, I'm bringing it to the next meeting, so we could have a full discussion on it, and to see if it requires it to be removed or not.
And then, just to kind of jump in on this, I want to just echo what Vice President Hernandez is saying, in that I will not be supporting this motion to continue this item for the simple fact that, to be frank, I think it's an utter waste of our time, because three of the board members gave direction that this is something we want to move forward with. So I think we just read our report at the next meeting, and we continue to move on with the direction that the board, the majority of the board already said that we wanted to go in. So I will not be supporting this motion to continue this item, because I just don't think it's appropriate.
Okay, that's your opinion?
Correct.
Mary's asked to postpone it for
Next meeting.
And so she's made that motion. I will second that motion, because I think, bring it back and talk about it.
So point of clarity? So the motion is to rescind this topic? No.
No.
The motion is to bring it back for discussion.
To the next meeting.
To the next meeting.
But it's still, it's still, rather than, it's still a rescind the motion, and I think as Vice President Hernandez said, if it was something
Okay, you're correct.
Yeah.
That's, yeah.
So let's say we reject this. Nothing stops
Yeah.
The person to bring it back next
Oh, a hundred percent, yeah.
Who cares?
Uh, yeah, I mean, there's a number of things that could stop that from coming back. We have, you're the board president, we have the superintendent who reviews the agenda, you decide what comes on here. And so, again, to echo the point, I think it's frankly bad board governance that this made it on the agenda to begin with, and so everything that we say doesn't always make it on the agenda. That's not how boards function, that's not how boards work, right? Your job is to prioritize and say the things that matter, the things that we should be talking about, the things that are most important for our students. So just, everything doesn't make it on here, especially things that the majority of the board voted for are typically not brought back by someone that voted against it. Otherwise, that creates an ability to consistently waste our time when we're trying to push for a direction, because there's times that we might find ourselves, again, on the losing side of other things, and it's not good board governance to bring those things back up, unless there's new information or new, a good reason to do that.
That's the reason why I'm bringing it back, to give you the new information.
I don't think undoing the, or undoing work or saying that we're going to do less work for the mental health of our students is ever a good reason, is ever something we should discuss.
So would
That's what your interpretation is. This is what Mary is talking about.
So would, I guess, would a compromise be for us to, next meeting, have a conversation around the existing programs for mental health around our students, and then from there decide what supports we can offer moving forward?
Exactly. That's all I'm asking for.
But that's different than what's
Yeah, that's very different.
Yeah.
And just for clarification, I think the original ask from Ms. Rocha was to actually pull it, which would achieve exactly what you were doing.
So if we can make that motion, I think that's, that, is that a comfortable compromise?
To pull it?
No, 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 no. To, I mean, so this
I'm all asking is just to propose it, postpone it until next meeting. That's all I'm asking for. To bring this back, it was my item. I'm asking to postpone it till next meeting.
With the understanding that we would have a full conversation with the existing programs, and then we would have a discussion?
Exactly. I want to share information of what's going on.
But the item before us is rescinding the motion. What you're suggesting is a completely different thing, which is totally fine. Again, I'm happy to talk about mental health all day, every day, but I'm not happy to talk about rescinding a motion on the formation of a committee for the board to do work when it comes to the mental health of our students.
Yeah, perhaps, you know, I think the only compromise that I would see is just take away that word rescind, because that's already predisposing what the action is going to be. So if it's revisit the motion, sure, I could support that, but I'm not going to support continuing an item that I fundamentally don't agree with.
I think we just pull this item. We can have a completely separate agenda item that focuses the conversation in a much more efficient way.
No, I don't want to pull it. I want to go back and have it re-see, I want to bring it back to the next meeting. That's all I want to do.
Trustee Rocha, would you
Full information on the mental health that the district is doing, and at that time, you can decide which way you want to go.
Would you be happy with, or would you be comfortable with, changing the motion or changing the language here to say revisit as opposed to rescind? Rescind it?
If the outcome is going to be
I believe you can only revisit during the same meeting? I don't know. I think there's a difference between revisit and rescind. Reconsideration.
Yeah.
You said reconsideration, I'm sorry. So would you be comfortable with changing that language, Trustee Rocha?
To rescind, to revisit, or to
May I speak on this? I apologize. According to Robert's Rules of Orders, there's three options to bring an item back. One would be rescind, which, or reconsider, which needs to be at the current meeting or the next meeting. That needs to be brought back by somebody who is on the prevailing side. There's also rescinding the motion, which that can be brought back at any time. Anyone can request that. As long as the board member gives prior notice at a meeting, then it goes on the agenda. I mean, it can be discussed at the next meeting, per Robert's Rules of Orders. The other one would be renewing an item, I believe that's the third one, but there are only three. Revisit isn't one of those options.
So maybe renew then?
That doesn't work either, though.
Yeah, I think we just don't bring this item back, and if we have, to need to have a different discussion, I think that's what we can do, but at least, you know, when it comes to the mental health of our students, I'm not looking to compromise.
I'm not compromising with mental health. All I'm trying to do is bring back some information, and I have a right as a board member to bring the item onto the agenda as anybody else.
Sure.
All I'm asking is, do you want to, okay, so next time we have the meeting, you don't like what I have as information, you stay with what you want to do. You just vote it down.
Yeah.
That's all I'm asking. An open meeting.
Yeah, and we can do that vote here now as well, which is, you know, why I say that is the cremation motion stands, I'm going to vote no, and if the board has a different direction, that is fine, right? I know how to be on the losing side, and I don't, you know, bring stuff back like that.
So do I.
So what I'm trying to understand, help me on, Mary is saying basically she wants to bring this back. The original word was rescind. We can legally do that, and if we fail to say you can bring it back, nothing stops Mary from bringing it back next week.
Of course, yeah, or next meeting.
Or next meeting, yeah, next meeting. So basically, it's sort of a currency. Same thing, Mary, you bring it back next week?
That's all I want.
And then we're going to talk about it as opposed to dealing with it tonight. I think that's just the request.
And does that require a motion?
Well, that would either require us voting on the original motion, which is essentially doing the same thing, or I think pulling, just pulling, withdrawing the motion, and then Mary can just kind of re-request this.
I think that would be
I think either way.
That's what I said. I'm withdrawing it, withdrawing it to the next meeting. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, so withdraw, so there's no motion needed?
So pulling the item would not require a motion or a vote?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So with that, too, then, I would like to actually make a motion that on that same agenda, we have a resolution for first reading, just first reading, that codifies the Trauma and Grief Resources and Response Committee with a spot for two board members to be appointed. So that way, that at that meeting, when we have the new information, if we want to go one way, we can, if we want to go the other way, we can. So that is my motion to bring
There's no motion.
I can make a motion at any time.
No action here. She's removing it, and she's going to bring it back to the next meeting.
What's still under this?
You can, I would
Bring it back next week.
As an item for discussion?
Yeah.
Without directing staff work to create the resolution? We can, I can work with you on language if you'd like.
Yeah, I guess the thing that I'm just concerned about is that a majority of the board at the last meeting said that we wanted this, and now one board member is halting the process that the majority of the board said that we wanted to go with. And I understand it's with well within individuals' rights to bring back anything that you want. You're an equal board member, but I also think that the will of the majority needs to be honored, and that But I also think that the will of the majority needs to be honored and that if we are gonna be considering rescinding the motion, I would like at that same meeting for us to be considering how to codify the work group and to allow the work to continue. Because it's, I mean, the incident that happened today, I think alone proves how badly this work group is needed and I don't want to waste any more time.
I think what's within our scope to do, um, at this meeting is we can motion to have that on the next agenda, that we have that codified here during this meeting, that we want this on the next agenda. So we can make a motion, uh, to do that, um, in particular.
Would that be most appropriate here or under item twenty?
Yeah, I think, I think we can't make a motion because it's not on there, but under future agenda items?
Future agenda items, that would be a more appropriate.
That's where it goes.
Yeah.
And I think it makes sense to have that when we're having the mental health thing, to put, you know, that item on.
Right, yeah.
We might want to look at board bylaws, ninety-one, thirty, ninety-two, hundred before next week, too. That's just a comment onward.
Which one?
We are on thirteen, I'm sorry, fourteen.
Mm-hmm.
None. Fifteen, resolution, authorize the submission of a grant application to the Bay Area Quality Management District.
Um, back in, in October, um, the board authorized the submission of a grant application to our Bay Area Quality as we're trying to, um, go green on our buses. They have requested some change to our resolution that just allows us to take advantage of any opportunities that come up. That is the only change to the resolution, so I would ask the board to approve it this evening.
I move approval.
I'll second.
All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Close. Passes. Fifteen B, yes, good, sure.
The board sees this often. Um, these are authorizations that are allowed under ed code to allow our teachers to sometimes teach some classes that do not have a standalone credential, stand-alone credential. And, um, I will point out, as Dr. Lewis will ask me, um, and is absolutely right, it's not somebody that's teaching a class that they don't have any, um, education or experience to do. This is usually a, um, a position that does not have a credential that is related to that one or they've done the coursework and everything required in order to teach that class. So I would ask the board to approve it this evening.
I move approval.
I'll second. Oh, you can have it, Mary.
Mary, ten seconds.
I got it.
All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Passes. Five zero. Uh, number sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen have zero, none. Twenty, future agenda items.
And if you want to work on the wording, you can always send them.
Mm-hmm. Well, offline.
Okay, twenty-one. Don't have any other speakers. Twenty-two's reports and comments from the board members.
So I'll go. Um, so I was very moved, uh, this evening by all of the teachers and community members that came out, um, to voice their concerns about what's, what is, um, happening in our school district. And, uh, my stepmom says that I do not share enough about what I actually do in my professional life. So I am a substitute teacher, um, so I have had the opportunity to be in the classroom. Um, and so I really, it did pull at my heartstrings to hear all of the teachers and the community members come out and share their, their testimony, um, and I just hope that they know that it did not fall on deaf ears. Um, I know that personally, um, I've seen a lot of these issues as well across the Bay Area and across, um, K-12. And then also, just in terms of, uh, reports and things that I'm involved in, tomorrow, we're restarting the Bicycle Garden conversation. So we had done, um, you know, kind of series of community meetings. Um, if the board's interested, I can send you guys information afterwards. I think it's just gonna be the smaller work group, um, but I will have a more in-depth report. Um, there's been some really cool things going on at the city, so I'm excited to share that. And that's it.
Okay. Uh, I want to sort of echo Trustee Householder's sentiment, um, you know, as a former teacher and someone who volunteers quite extensively, uh, in the classroom. I hear you. We hear you. Um, you know, obviously, we can't give positions and things like that while negotiations are going on, but we want to know that, you know, we definitely appreciate all of the hard work, uh, the dedication. You know, my wife is working in the classroom right now, uh, here in AUSD. Um, so we, dinnertime conversations, we hear it. Walking around campus, we see it. You know, talking and mentoring students, we feel it. So, you know, it's, it's not for nothing. So, you know, I wanted to sort of echo that sentiment there. So a couple of different things. One of the things that was mentioned earlier, I've been working with, uh, this organization called Afro Comic-Con. And what they do is they, everybody here has heard of Comic-Con.
Mm-hmm.
I, I've admitted a couple of times that I'm a little bit of a nerd. Um, and so Afro Comic-Con focuses on, uh, black and brown artists and things like that to highlight those, uh, cartoons. And we've been trying to work with them to get them into different activities out here in Antioch. Uh, as was mentioned earlier, I think I shared it with most of the people, uh, the administrators in this room. There was a op, an internship opportunity that ended this Friday. Velma Wilson mentioned her son is in it. It's a nine-week program. Uh, there was a number of students in AUSD and other districts around who, um, are participating, so I wanted to highlight that. Uh, I am chairing a s- a military scholarship for my fraternity. Uh, the funding has already been allocated. Uh, that presentation will be next week. Uh, the last week, I was on a, um, a diversity panel, uh, for UC Berkeley. Um, and we discuss, you know, when did, when did we, uh, understand the culture was a thing and it impacted us? So that was a conversation. Also, this weekend is the Lions Club. They're having their annual crab feed. Uh, so if you are interested, you can contact me offline. It's Saturday.
I'll be there.
Yes. Um, also coming up, um, is, uh, my fraternity is having a botillion. Uh, that is for the Solano County Alpha, uh, for, Chapter of the Alpha Phi Fraternity Incorporated. If you're interested in participating, uh, fundraising goes towards scholarship for, uh, primarily young men were fraternity, so, uh, primarily young men. Um, and I did participate in the Black History Event at Black Diamond. Uh, and there was one more that I cannot think of.
I also just forgot to mention, this Saturday, there's the memorial dedication, uh, at Antioch High School um, for folks who, um, were Antioch High School graduates who died in, in combat. And so I'll be there. It's at eleven o'clock at Antioch High School. And it's been, it was delayed for years, so there's, you know, a lot of kind of positive emotion and momentum around it. So it should be a good event.
I'd like to add to that their names.
Yes.
Blue Star Moms is putting it on, eleven o'clock, as you said, right? There's a plaque for them in front of the flag. And I'm not sure what the letters stand for, but it's S S, SSG Daniel R.
Staff Sergeant.
Thank you. S, and his last name is.
Shiley.
Shiley, thank you. And then of course, SGT is John D. Aragon. So those are the two that are gonna be honored on Saturday.
And I will be speaking at that.
Exactly.
Great, yeah, I have a few quick announcements. Um, one exciting thing that, um, I get to do in, at the end of this month, um, is I've been asked to keynote a conference for health science students, uh, in Arizona. So it'll be for fifteen hundred, uh, students. It's a part of a CTE organization. Um, so I'm really excited to, you know, go out there, share my story, talk about, um, you know, my experience here in Antioch and kind of, you know, help, you know, uh, push my story and the stories that really are people here in this school district. So I'm excited and very lucky and blessed to have the opportunity to be able to do a full keynote. I've spoken in front of students and, you know, done like little panels and things like that, but never had like, um, a full, like, forty-five minute keynote. So it'll be a fun, great experience. Um, and I look forward to taking that experience and finding ways to bring that back to our students here as well. Um, so I'm really excited about that. Um, the other thing is, um, some of the other work I do involved in the community is I've done a lot of work with the Rivertown Preservation Society, which, um, for a long time has advocated for doing a lot of work with the BD Lumber Yard. And recently, the city has moved forward with, uh, imagining a, uh, community town square, some kind of community gathering space in that BD Lumber Yard area. And so one of the projects that I'm working on is putting on a workshop where we can get, um, particularly MDA youth, but really all ages, because it's really great to have a large collaboration of the entire community, um, to really, uh, reimagine downtown and design your ideal Antioch Rivertown Square. Um, so right now, we're, we're a little bit tentative, but the date we're looking at is April second at ten a.m. and that's right before the, uh, Sesquicentennial event that's happening and the Antioch Historical Society, uh, museum. So we're hoping to, um, kind of like encourage people to come to that and then go over there, um, and continue celebrating Antioch. Uh, but just kind of want to put that out there on people's radars. Um, it'll be a fun, interactive, design thinking workshop. I'm really big on things like design thinking. Um, so it'll be a way of directly getting to influ- and then this information gets submitted to the city and they'll, the, the council will make decisions. Um, and the, uh, people that designed this future gathering space will use some of this, um, as inspiration. So it's a really great chance to directly get to shape your community. Um, so I'm looking forward to being able to provide more concrete information about that, but just kind of wanted to share that now and I'll, I'll show more details as we get those things solidified. But April second, ten a.m. is what we're looking at, uh, but looking to solidify that in the future. Um, oh, and then lastly, um, as I've been doing, I love highlighting, uh, different children's books that I think are great for highlighting. Uh, the one today is, uh, Little Leaders, Bold Women and Black History. Um, and it's got just a ton of different really inspirational figures from black history. Um, you know, figures that really don't get talked about enough. It's got some of the ones that people, I think, um, you know, read about more often, but it's also got a lot of really great people in here, like the first uh, female black surgeon. It's, it's a, it's a pretty thick book, uh, but it's a really great read. I learned a lot just from taking a flip through it. Um, so this will be, you know, I'll work with the superintendent to find its way into some place in our school district. Um, and for anyone that's curious, you know, definitely check it out. I enjoyed it. The pictures are cute.
I think it's a nice book.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Last announcement? Uh, go ahead, Doc.
I have one more. So my, my chapter of my fraternity is also holding a fundraising dinner. Uh, and as I mentioned, I think two, um, two meetings ago, uh, we give about, we give a number of scholarships. Uh, and so these fundraising dinners are a way for us to ra- obviously raise funds. Um, so if you're interested in supporting, and there are a number of ways to support, uh, you can check on my Facebook page or you can reach out to me directly. Thank you.
Okay, my, my last item was, or two items there is Read Across America. I was able to do that again with Dr. Seuss outfit with Turner and, um, Mission Elementary School. I love doing it. The second thing is to invite all of you to the Contra Costa County, uh, event that they're having for Caesar Chavez. They always have it at the end of the month of March. On his birthday, they try, but this will be on the twenty-ninth at eleven o'clock at Caesar, at the, um, I guess the new building administration for, uh, county offices. So that would be on the twenty-ninth of March at eleven o'clock.
We also need to see pictures of you in the Seuss costume.
We missed out last year.
You know, one of, one of the things, uh, the first hour and a half or so, or two hours of this meeting was very emotional to me because I was, uh, I spent ten years of my life being the bargaining chair.
Right.
For AEA and all these teachers of ours are, for that organization. I spent ten years as the president of that union. So whatever's sharing, I understand very clearly.
Exactly.
But I also know our responsibilities, the board and the budget and all that stuff.
Finances.
That's why it's called bargaining.
Exactly.
And, you know, and that's the process. And I think we as a board have given directions to Jessica to be within the boundaries and within borders, but do what you can do to make those teachers more satisfied. And there's always issues that anybody who works with kids has. And our role as a board is to govern in a way where it's as good as it can be for their professionally and I lived it for a long time, so I understand.
President Hack, I don't usually speak during this part, but I just wanted to thank the board for the opportunity to bring forward, uh, it was the board's request that we bring forward, the dual enrollment, the CTE. And it was such a pleasure to talk about that and to hear your ideas about, uh, what more you'd like to see for students and really appreciated. And also, your very thoughtful questions about the budget, uh, especially after hearing, you know, very passionate, um, employees. So I appreciate that. I know sometimes, you know, you guys get passionate also, but I think, you know, we did a great job tonight talking about some really important things. So thank you.
I'd like to thank the board for allowing Ronald McDonald to be ha- be present and that we gave him his certificate. I think it was very important and you can see he's a dynamic person.
Thank you for coordinating that. All right, future meetings. April thirteenth, twenty-first, and twenty-seventh. The twenty-first is that special board. The motion to adjourn.
Move approval.
All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Wait, we need a second.
Second.
You said aye, didn't say a second, okay. We're out of here.